Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Monday, July 20, 2020 City Council Regular Meeting. I'm going to call this to order. We are meeting in a remote meeting fashion tonight, so before we move on to tonight's agenda items, I'd like to just acknowledge that meeting format. On March 6, I issued an emergency proclamation declaring a civil emergency in the city due to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 24, the governor issued Proclamation 20-28 prohibiting meetings that fall under the Open Public Meetings Act, such as our city council meetings, from being conducted in person. The prohibition has been extended through August 1. Tonight's meeting will be held entirely remotely. The meeting will be recorded, streamed live, and available for later viewing on the city's YouTube channel. A call-in number was provided on the meeting agenda for members of the public who wish to call in by phone to listen live to the meeting or make comments. For those members of the public on the call tonight, welcome. For those of you who submitted the online form to make comments, your name will be called under the Audience Comment portion of the meeting. And if you did not sign up but wish to speak, you can make comments tonight just by pressing *3 on your phone, and it will let the city clerk know that you want to be added to the speakers list. At this point in time, we will take a moment to roll call, to take a roll call of the council members in attendance. Please stay here when I call your name. Councilmember De Michelle?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Here.
Thank you. Council President Hunt?
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Here.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Here.
And Councilmember Walsh?
Here.
Thank you. That is all seven present. There is also city staff participating in tonight's meeting, including City Administrator Bob Kowick, Human Resources Director Stephanie Johnson, Senior Human Resources Analyst Lauren Knox, Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes, Human Services Coordinator Monica Negriella, Deputy City Administrator Andrea Snyder, City Attorney Jim Haney, and Deputy City Clerk Tisha Gieser. Other city staff may also be in attendance. So first, I'd like to reiterate some of our meeting guidelines. For all meeting attendees, please speak clearly and pause frequently. State your name each time before speaking. Mute your microphone when not speaking. And if you are also streaming the live video feed, please turn the sound off if there is a delay. For council members, please continue to use the chat to indicate when you wish to speak, and please identify yourself before you ask a question, make a motion, or second a motion, or participate in debate. Next item on our agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance. I would ask all to keep their microphones muted, but join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you. The next item on the agenda this evening is Audience Comments. So make sure you direct your comments to the whole council and not individuals. And while this is not a question-and-answer session, we will contact you to follow up if needed. So when you are recognized, please unmute your microphone, and on your phone, *6 may be an option to do that. State your name, address, relationship to the city. Speak clearly and pause frequently. Limit your comments to five minutes, and please remute your microphone when done. There's also a public hearing tonight, AB 7993, Temporary Regulatory Relief for Businesses, Use of Sidewalk, Private Property, and Sinage. These are some interim zoning regulations. If you'd like to make comments on this topic, you'll have an opportunity to do that later in the meeting. If you do not respond after your name or phone number is called, or if your connection is lost unexpectedly, the meeting will still need to proceed. You are encouraged to rejoin the meeting if able. And again, for those who've joined us tonight and would like to speak but did not sign up in advance, please press *3 on your phone. We will call the first six digits of your phone number when it is your turn to make comments. Personal attacks, obscene language, derogatory remarks, and disruptive behavior are not permitted. If a speaker is out of order, I will ask them to stop and mute their microphone, and if a speaker does not comply, I may direct staff to have them mute their microphone. If a disruption to the meeting occurs and order cannot be restored, I may direct staff to remove you from the call. The council and I take these citizen comments, whether they are written or verbal, as an important aspect of the public process. The city takes comments seriously, and we thank all of you for taking your time tonight to come to our meeting to address those. City Clerk, can you please identify the first person who has signed up to speak? Yes, the first person signed up is Rick Reagan. Rick, I've unmuted you.
Good evening, everyone. This is Rick Reagan. I'm, uh, my wife and I, Reece are the new owners of Moxchino Restaurant. We took ownership in May of 2019. That is on 15 Northwest Alder Street. And I just wanted to take a few moments to talk to everyone about the streetery that was open for a while and the state of the restaurant here in King County since the COVID. Many of you may know, and some of you obviously will not, that Reece and I bought the restaurant back in 2019, and we bought it for a couple of different reasons. One being the love of Issaquah and the surrounding community. I'd been in the restaurant business for a very long time and just felt like I wanted to give back to the community and chose Issaquah for that reason. We had a fantastic 2019 and was able to sponsor local events such as the Village Theater. We have a fantastic relationship with them, the Issaquah Young Life, and many others that we were able to pass along some of our good fortune in 2019. I think it goes also, I'd like to say that, you know, some of these local restaurants that I'm going to talk about draw new visitors to downtown, which helps us all. I don't mean to talk and be the voice for all restaurants, but I did want to talk about the impact that this COVID-19 has had on our restaurant and many others. Since the COVID-19 impact, we have taken significant hits to our revenue. Year over year, 2019 versus 2020, our little restaurant, Moxchinos, has had a decrease in revenue of over 41%. This is actually not too bad when compared to other local restaurants that are even seeing more significant decreases. We were able to fortify some of our revenue by doing the To Go program. But I have to say to everyone on this call that without immediate changes, our little restaurant's in jeopardy. You know, Reece and I are digging into savings, and it's just that without further changes, we really are in jeopardy. The good news is, is that the streetery project was a fantastic hit for us. The first week, we had a record night on that Friday. We drove revenues even above what we would normally see on a Friday night because we were able to add additional seating outside and run the inside at the 50%, which is the mandate for King County at this time. We also spent a lot of time working with Christina and her team on our strategies for social distancing. We learned as we went, but really worked well with her and her team on what we could do to make sure we were being as safe as we possibly could. We received really positive feedback from customers, as well as other business owners and the community members. I spent a lot of time answering the phone and just having people say, wow, this is really cool. It enables us to feel good about going out and walking around and getting some fresh air. Please keep it up. And then unfortunately, it went away, and I understand that it was just a test period, and we had to take some time to analyze and see if we wanted to move forward. I want to also remind everyone that, you know, sometimes I'm talking to people and they say, well, Rick, you know, when business comes back, it'll be sort of business as usual. And that's just not the case. When we've been shut down for as long as we have, and now running at 50%, if, I project that it would take, if business came back as normal, it would take a year and a half to two years to recover from this, to sort of dig our way out. So this is something that's going to take some aggressive stance. It's going to take for us being, working as a community together to develop a plan that will obviously sustain the restaurant, but the local businesses as well. I know that every business owner has a different take on the streetery project, and some had a more positive impact than others, and I understand that. I want to also say that I had a friend who was in Edmonds, and he sent me some video and pictures of Edmonds. And Edmonds, that little downtown in Edmonds, is doing a pilot project very similar to the streetery. And from what I hear, the feedback's been fantastic, and the business owners are really flourishing because of the additional revenue. So I just ask that the city council, and the mayor, and everyone else involved really pay close attention to this decision. It's critical. I know that many of us are on the ledge of having to close our doors and let go of some dreams, and it would be a shame to do so without a fight. And I am here to help where I can. I have a lot of expertise in food service and safety, and how to run safe environments, and working with Christine has, Christina has helped a great deal. So I guess that's all I have to say. I appreciate the time. I appreciate the forum. Thank you for listening to my comments. Always know that I'm in my little corner, and Moxchino is willing to help if you ever need anything. So I appreciate it, and I hope to see all of you in the restaurant very, very soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. City Clerk, who's next up on our list tonight? Next, we have Sharon Fries. Sharon, I've unmuted you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Sharon Fries, one of the owners of Art by Fire, with a glass-blowing studio on Front Street. I first wanted to start by thanking the mayor, city council, staff, everyone pulled together to make the streetery happen, and your extra efforts are greatly appreciated. I really appreciate how well you worked with Dia to help pull this together along with all the community volunteers and make this dream a reality. It was a scramble, and it was well worth it. Art by Fire's been here for, in Issaquah, for 12 and a half years. I have a young man working for me who grew up blowing glass there on a class trip. So it's become part of the fixture of the community. And my husband and I were lucky enough to take it on five years ago when the founders retired. As this, my husband's going to give you some hard stats from us in a little bit, but I wanted to give you a personal touch. When we had the streetery running, we had people who'd been part of our community, Art by Fire's community, for years come stop by and check on us, see how we were. But it also gave us the opportunity to form new relationships with people who came down to be part of the restaurant team. There was a wonderful ambience with having the street closed and having the tables out there that made it feel like just a nice vacation day, and you could sit down and just have a leisurely meal and unwind, and it was wonderful. So the atmosphere was just fantastic. I do want to stress that I really understand safety first. I'm wholeheartedly behind that, and I think the city and the council and everyone have done a really good job of finding that fine line to walk, and I understand why we paused it when the COVID numbers rose. But what I'm here to ask you for today is, when the numbers allow, it would hugely help us to recover, to have Friday, Saturday, and Sunday available to do the streetery. And I personally thought it was so wonderful, and it's done such great things for our business. I would like to see this become a permanent thing in Issaquah, not just a COVID recovery project. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you very much for coming tonight, Sharon. City Clerk, who is up next on our list? Next, we have Mike Brown. Mike, I've unmuted you.
Thank you, and thank you to the mayor and the city council for taking the time to listen to my thoughts. I own and operate the Domino's Pizza on Front and Alder Street, and I just wanted to share with you a little bit of my experience with the streetery. And just like many others, my family has been impacted by this also. So I'd just like to share with the mayor and the council some of the damages that has happened to my business during the two weeks of the streetery. So compared to the previous two weeks before the streeter week, streetery, my sales dropped 20% on Fridays and Saturdays with the shutdown of Front Street. I also had to bring in an extra $300 per week in labor to try to make up for the service that it took my drivers longer times to deliver my customers driving around Front Street in the crowded streets due to Front Street being closed. I also had to pay $700 for a mailer to go out to my customers to try to help boost my sales, to keep this store at a breakeven or to minimize the losses. I also had a 20% additional service times to my customer due to the traffic and using alternate routes. We also had a 20% drop in foot traffic coming into the store due to the Alder Street being closed and Front Street being closed. And again, out of all the businesses down there, I was impacted the most because Alder Street was picked out to be the only street closed east to west and Front Street being closed. I'd also like to point out that the survey, that the city did a nice survey, which I'd like to point out, I sent Jen Davis Hayes and Christina Brunning an email on July 7 requesting to be included in the surveys, but unfortunately, that request was not answered. The number or comments that I'm going to include next does not include my business. I'd like to point out on the city survey that question two, only 27% of the business seen increased sales. Question three, 45% seen a decrease or no change in their sales. Question four, this is the one that really gets to me, is 68% of their employees see no increase in their hours. Let me repeat that. 68% of the employees see no increase in their hours. That bothers me that my employees would not see an increase in their hours. Question seven, 81% say they would participate in the streetery. It would seem to me, when you're forced, that they close the street down regardless of what you have to say. That's not a fair question to say, ask if you would be participating in the next streetery. Of the comments on there, seven, there was 21, seven were for the streetery, five were against, and five had mixed comments or reviews for the streetery. The right away to my business, again, Alder is the main true fare for our delivery and our pickup business. Both access points to my business were closed, which negatively impacted my sales. Blocking these access points is our biggest damage to my business. Alder was shut down for one business to put up a tent and to have storage on all of Alder Street, and my business had to suffer for it. Upon sending pictures to the mayor showing the east side was not needed for storage, East Alder was thankfully opened up. Our sales the second week increased Sunday to Thursday due to this opening. Again, once Front Street was closed to stop our access point, the negative sales returned. Again, Alder Street access is needed for my business. The last I'd like to point out that this benefits a few. The streetery only benefits the few. Of the 22 surveys filled out, only 27% benefited.
Excuse me, Mike? You've reached the end of your comment period. Please summarize.
Okay. Let, please, let's have a program that serves the whole and not the few, as the city survey reinforces. Great job on the sidewalk parking and signage. Edmonds, Redmond's, and Enhamclaw have adopted, but they have not closed their street. This is an example of good ideas that benefit the whole. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you for joining us tonight. Tisha, who else is on our speakers list? Next is Art Fries. Art, I've unmuted you.
Hello, I'm Art Fries, and I'm the other owner for Art by Fire. And I just want to get into a few observations, a few statistics that we've seen from the streetery. First thing we saw was that it is very weather-related, and the results we saw were, you know, seriously moderated by, you know, the weather being weather cold. But overall, we saw our business increase 54% during the weekends of the streetery versus the year before, the same weekends. This is helping us with a serious problem. When we looked at our March to May business in 2019 versus 2020, we only did 15.7% of the business in 2020 that we had done in 2019. On top of the challenges we face, 46% of our revenue historically has been from events and classes, and that is revenue that is unrecoverable and will not resume at all until we get into at least Phase 3. And even in Phase 3, it will be limited because we won't be able to do our whole range of shapes or objects for classes and events. Our best day during the streetery was 148% higher than our best day outside of the streetery in this year. And our combined Friday and Saturday totals were 349% with the streetery versus without. Speaking to having it on Sundays, our average Sunday historically, you know, historic revenue Sundays is very small, and if we're going to recover from the revenue we've lost in the March to May timeframe, the revenue we've lost while we've had to bring our furnace back up and melt glass, we're going to need to recover revenue, you know, during Sundays as well. We also employ three, three and a half people in the town, on top of my wife and myself in Art by Fire, and contribute to the city that way, as well as being a longstanding business and an anchor for the arts in Issaquah. To sum it up, the streetery has been very, very positive for us, both financially and also in getting more people into the business and just meeting more people for our business. We would, we strongly support continuing the streetery and extending it into Sundays as well, if practical, and as well as having the streetery be a more permanent thing and not just a recovery. I want to thank everyone for the time to give you these statistics, and I appreciate the work that Dia, the council, the city, and the other volunteers and organizations have done to keep downtown Issaquah, you know, the treasure that it is. My wife and I would have never bought the business if it had been anywhere else but downtown Issaquah. It has a unique vibrance and a unique, you know, environment for the arts. Thank you much, and have a great night.
Thank you, Art. City Clerk, at this point in time, I'm going to remind any others that may be with us, because I see a significant number of phone numbers. If you would like to be added to the speakers list for audience comments, please press *3, and we will call the first six digits of your phone number when it's your turn to make comments. City Clerk, do we have anybody else signed up for comments today? Yes, the next person signed up is Shauna London. Shauna, I'm going to unmute what I believe is your phone number. Can you confirm you're on the line?
Yes, I'm on the line, and my name is Shauna.
Okay, great. You're up.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor and the council. I'm here in a little differently than other people. I'm a resident. I live on Tiger Mountain Road outside the city limits, but downtown Issaquah is really where I consider my home. I'm also a professional mental health therapist. I've been a psychotherapist for over 30 years, and I have to say, I've never been this busy as what has been happening through this pandemic. And so I speak to you as a resident, but I also speak as somebody who's very concerned about the mental health of our community and really of our world through this. When I went through to the streetery, when I first heard about it, I just thought, what a wonderful idea. We need this. And when I went to it, I was so impressed with all the safeguards that had been taken. I felt as a consumer like I was really being considered and thought of, something special was being offered to me, and more importantly, I felt like I could finally get out in a safe way and be in the world, be sort of connected to other people, but still be distanced and protected. It was so rejuvenating for me and for all the people that I've told about this. I'm not only speaking for myself, but so many residents were so excited about this streetery, and when it, when you had to pause it, we were really, really disappointed, and we really hope that you'll bring it back. I, it, I know that there's a lot of business and monetary and all you guys, so much, you know, love and support for all you guys for hanging in there through this. But those of us that are trying to survive this pandemic, not only on the physical level, but on the emotional level, we need things like this, and so appreciate that our city stepped up and did something different, and it wasn't easy, and made it a very beautiful thing. And I appreciate all the restaurants, really, that did the extra work to make this happen, and I want them to survive, and I want downtown to survive. So I'm speaking, hopefully, for a lot of people when I say, please, bring this back, and I agree, extend it to Sunday, that'd be great, and maybe even after this crazy pandemic is over, that would be wonderful, too. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Shauna. City Clerk, is there anyone else signed up for audience comments? Yes, next we have Jeff Cansler. Jeff, I've unmuted you.
Hi, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to talk. I'm representing Jack's Grill, Sunset Ale House in L-42 Cantina. I'm the director of operations. Normally, my boss would be here, but he is out of town, and he asked me to call in. I want to comment on two aspects of this for us, and the first of it being the economics. Seats are everything in our business, and there are a lot of considerations in opening and running a restaurant, but not many as core to making a go as how many seats you can accommodate in the square footage of your establishment. We, this is the economics of Sunset Ale House, and just a few days since we've expanded seating into the parking lot over there, we see this in the bottom line of L-42 Cantina during the times we can seat out on the patio. And I think I would be echoing a lot of restaurateurs' perspectives on this, that in these circumstances, a few tables, a few nights a week, can really be the difference between it making sense to keep the lights on or not, or even being able to keep the lights on or not. That's the, kind of the economic perspective I wanted to bring. The second is the comfort and safety aspect of it. In my role, part of my job is to respond to our correspondence from guests. We have restaurants in Seattle, one in Laurelhurst, one in West Seattle, and our place is in Issaquah, of course. And we get a lot of folks who are reaching out to ask if they can sit outside, and a number of them taking a pass when we tell them that they can't, if it's, for example, our West Seattle store or our Laurelhurst store. They say, thank you, we love you, we'll see you, we'll see you when we can, when we can feel a little bit more comfortable. I obviously don't have statistics on how many more people would come out, support the businesses in Issaquah if they were able to sit outside, how many people who aren't going out who otherwise would because they're not comfortable being inside. But just based on the amount of correspondence we get around it, I think it would be substantial. And those are the two main points that I wanted to make. And again, I appreciate all the hard work you are all doing at the opportunity to talk to you.
Thank you, Jeff. City Clerk, is there anyone else who's signed up? Yes, I see that the caller with the first six digits, 202641, has raised their hand. I've unmuted you.
Yeah, hello, this is Jesse Jensen. Just wanted to thank the city of Issaquah for the opportunity to come out and just listen. I spoke with Mary Lou, and I'm actually running for the 8th congressional district, and I'm just- And I'm just happy and proud to have the opportunity here to listen in and hear all the important things that are going on in Issaquah. So, thank you again. I appreciate it. And I'll be listening.
Thank you, Jesse. City Clerk, do we have anyone else who's signed up this evening?
Yes, Christina Bruning. Christina.
Hi, uh, this is Christina. I'm the Board President of the Downtown Issaquah Association. Madam Mayor and members of the City Council, I want to thank you all for your service and leadership during this uncertain time. If we were able to be in council chambers, you would see a room full of businesses and community members united on the success of the historic downtown and the health of people who live, work, and play right here in Issaquah. The Downtown Association is a community-led, volunteer-driven organization, and it aims to cultivate a thriving old town that builds community and celebrates charm. Celebrating 25 years of service in the historic downtown district, we are most proud of the people who have served. We're powered by volunteers. And this evening, I'd like to showcase Sue Paulus, a familiar face who was recognized earlier today by the Washington Main Street Program as the Excellence on Main Standout Volunteer for Issaquah. Over the years, we have all seen Sue tending the flowerbeds and hanging posters all over Issaquah, a friendly hello and a welcome for a community that she loves. She helps lead our Keep Issaquah Beautiful Day, and she's even on the Pumpkin Patch Team. Earlier today, I had the privilege of doing a private photo shoot, physically distanced from Sue after she received her public acknowledgement. Sadly, Sue will be moving to the East Coast later this year. So we will miss her dearly. Additionally, Finstistro and Kaleidoscope School of Music were recognized by the Main Street Program for resilience on Main for brightening the community and persevering despite of numerous challenges. Amidst the pandemic, DIA has pivoted and embraced a balanced work plan, challenging the historic district to be alive, inviting, and vibrant. We ask ourselves several questions. How do we make it easier to do business in Issaquah? And we want to thank you for your swift action to streamline and waive fees for sidewalk and private lot usage, as well as A-frame permits. Several of our businesses have already leveraged these opportunities. How do we engage in partnerships to showcase the best of historic Issaquah? And how do we activate public space and engage the community? It was last February when I stood before you showcasing the Street Skates Plan. How does the community create an appealing pedestrian-friendly area where people would enjoy spending time and money in local shops? The streetery exemplifies a collaborative effort that provides additional seating for our restaurants and creates that place to recreate, whether it's walking, running, or cycling, both of which enhance the consumer confidence. We stand with the doctors, the scientists, and the state leadership, supporting the mask mandate, urging people to take COVID-19 seriously and do what we can together. The pandemic as a social movement created a window of opportunity for change. Some years ago, we lost our way. We became car-centric, and we are not alone. Robert Putnam's Bowling Alone is a critical look at the trends in the U.S. over time, explaining bonding social capital, which is formed when people bond over shared feelings and experiences such as a pandemic. Our community seeks a sense of belonging and empowerment. We need to reclaim our public space. We collectively have to revision what a historic downtown is. We need to be a place that people come to, not a place that people go through. Now more, more than ever, we have a crucial role to play in the support of small business and the quality of life here in Issaquah. Let's raise the collective voice of our businesses and community and move forward together to thrive. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Christina. Uh, City Clerk, do we have anyone else on our list tonight?
Yes, I see the caller with the first six digits, 425443, would like to make comments. I've unmuted you. Hello, caller 425443, are you on the line? You may need to unmute yourself.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes. Go ahead.
This is Eric, this is Eric Pascal from Levitate Gastropub. Um, I just want to throw my hat into the ring for the continued, um, opportunities with the, the streetery. Just a couple of quick comments. Uh, we're doing as best we can right now with, uh, takeouts, being able to provide service to guests in a very limited capacity. We have a pretty small space, similar to other restaurants down, um, on Front Street. So we're pretty challenged with just having a small patio where we have limited our capacity. Certainly a small space within the restaurant and a couple of tables out on Front Street right now. For the days that we did participate in the streetery, we matched what we were doing last summer, which was our biggest summer that we ever had. So we were being able to match revenue on a traditional Friday and Saturday evening, which is pretty exciting. The last few weekends when we haven't had the streetery in place, we're down about 54% from what we were at, uh, when we were participating in streetery. So it just shows the, the impact financially that it has for us at the restaurant. And then the impact certainly that we could be able to contribute to revenue for the city as well through sales tax. Um, I think the big thing that I want to just highlight real quick about staffing, really our staffing right now is so impacted by, um, the social distancing requirement that we have and the restrictions on the amount of seat and capacity that we could have within the restaurant, that not having our opportunity for the streetery the past few weekends, it's actually made it more challenging for us, um, to keep as much staff on. So for, for me, it's, it's a great thing to be able to keep a staffing level similar to last summer versus a staffing level where, um, for instance, this weekend, even though the weather was nice, I, I think there's a lot more fear that's being driven. So people aren't as excited to go inside of the restaurant. Right now, they prefer to be on the patio or out on the two tables that are on Front Street. But ultimately, the, the revenue impact that we saw was, was substantial. It was, it was, it was big. So, um, I would like to encourage as best we can the continued use of, uh, streetery when there's that opportunity, certainly trying to accommodate some of the other feedback that came into play this evening. And certainly if we could expand that to Sundays as well. I really do think that that would have not only a good revenue impact for the city, certainly for us, but it's a great thing for our staff as well because that will allow me to keep additional staff on as opposed to, um, needing to let people go early or what have you. So I thank you for the time to be able to quickly present to you this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. City Clerk, do we have anyone else wishing to participate?
No, no one else has indicated the desire to speak. And if I could ask Jesse, Christina, and Eric to please press star 3 on their phones to lower their hands? Thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for everyone that came in tonight. It seems like the big topic we're hearing about is the streetery, which is an informational item for council this evening. We heard from several business owners and some residents about the positives, but we also did hear from a business owner who is not seeing a benefit from it. And a few folks actually asking for an expansion of the amount of time from Friday through Sunday and potentially through the year. So thank you all for coming in. Please stay, uh, stay with us as we go through this item with the council. Um, and also remember, anyone that's here this evening, if there's additional things you want to send, please just send an email to your city council at citycouncil@issaquahwa.gov.
Mayor Polly, this is Tisha. Oh, my apologies. It, it looked as if there was one more member of the public wishing to speak, but I, I, my apologies, they just lowered their hands. Okay, sorry for the interruption.
Thank you, Tisha. I think it's great that if somebody took the time and effort that you're attracting it closely to make sure they get the opportunity to speak. So no worries.
Well, and you know, the, the hand just reappeared. So if, if you're willing to take a moment to see if this caller would like to make some comments?
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay, uh, this is caller 425677. I've unmuted you.
Uh, yes, this is Kim Christensen. Can you hear me?
We can, Kim, and this is the mayor. You can go ahead with your comments.
Oh, hi, Mary Lou. Thank you.
Hi.
I, I just wanted to touch bases, uh, do volunteer work with, uh, the Downtown Association. And my participation, those two weeks of the Downtown Association was being, um, right behind the barricades, being the emergency attendant. So I needed to have my car there and I needed to be there just in case there was an emergency. So subsequently, um, there were a lot of people coming through that, that one entrance. And a lot of people had, you know, what's going on and this sound, this looks so neat. And I probably volunteered over those two weeks, about, probably about 35 hours, I'd say. And most, most of the people, in fact, not most, all of the people that I spoke with and had interactions with, there were probably 35 to 40 people just asking what's going on and maybe they hadn't heard about it and what a great idea. And they just loved the IT, you know, the idea of getting out of the house, um, just walking around and just being part of the community and seeing other citizens. I know COVID is, is, is a concern for us, but I think that we did a good job and Christina was so instrumental in, at each, at least I know at each end and at my end there, because I was right there at Front Street and Sunset, is that we had masks. Uh, if anybody needed a mask, we had sanitation stations. So we were, we were being very cautious and providing whatever needs that, that people had. So, um, I would definitely suggest that, that we continue this. And I think that not only will just provide excitement for the community and the citizens and let them get outside and just see other people, but still be able to socially, you know, distance themselves, but just, just get out and about. And, um, it'll help, I think, all of our merchants and restaurants. And, um, I think, I think it was, it was very beneficial from, from what I heard in the feedback. So I appreciate it and, uh, thank you for your time.
Thank you. And I'm going to go back to City Clerk one more time to see if we have anybody else who would like to speak.
Yes, thank you. We do have one more caller, uh, with the prefix 360319. I've unmuted you. Caller 360319, I've unmuted you. You may also need to unmute your phone. One more time, caller with the number 360319. I've unmuted you. Are you able to speak? Okay, uh, my apologies, Mayor. I, we don't seem to be getting any audio from that caller.
Thank you. Such are the limitations of our online meetings, for sure. Um, thank you for checking back in, no City Clerk. That is great. Um, I also want to acknowledge that any comments that were received by email to the City Council that are on tonight's agenda topics will be acknowledged by the Council President Hunt under the relevant agenda items. Next item of business is committee and regional reports, and we will start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Just to say, I guess that I'll be attending a few upcoming regional meetings. The next meeting of the Affordable Housing Committee of the Growth Management Planning Council is, uh, this Wednesday at 1:00 P.M. Uh, and then also the next meeting of the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors is also this Wednesday at 3:30 P.M. It's a big day. Thank you, Mayor Polly. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember De Michelle.
Uh, thank you. This is Councilmember De Michelle. And, uh, on July the 9th, I attended the Governing Board for Healthier Here. It was primarily a business meeting, but we did hear, uh, from three members of the group who discussed equity. And then we met together in breakout sessions to have small group discussions about how we could implement some policy changes in our organization. So it was a very, uh, helpful meeting for me personally. And that is my full report on that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Next up is Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh, and I have no report this evening.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Coming back to my list, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. The Lodging Tax Advisory Committee met on July 7th. Um, it is a five-member committee. Uh, we first discussed the impact of the, impact of the pandemic on the lodging tax. And because the tax is only assessed on hotel stays and hotel stays are down significantly, we talked about the projections. For example, in March 2019, the monthly collection was $17,662. But in March 2020, it was $2,963, a decrease of 83%. And the projection, projection for the rest of the year for the collection of that tax doesn't look much better. Um, the committee then, uh, was presented with a request from Village Theater for $25,000 for a COVID-related relief. Um, and that, um, request was facilitated by the administration, not by the Lodging Tax Advisory Committee or the council. Village Theater had a very lengthy and thoughtful presentation. Um, and the committee's general feedback was that the request from one organization seemed like a one-off, meaning that other organizations were not given the same opportunity to request funds. I did, um, end up making a motion with the hope that it would get seconded so we could have a formal deliberation by that committee and then recommend, um, one way or the other to the council. But the motion did not get a second, uh, so there's nothing, nothing before the council. I am in the process of working with staff to schedule another LTAC meeting so the committee can discuss in more detail its plans for how to use its funds during the pandemic. And I anticipate that that meeting will be in the next couple of weeks. The Eastside Fire and Rescue Finance and Administrative Committee will meet this Wednesday at 12:00 noon. And the, um, the only item on that agenda is the proposed 2021 budget. So we will begin that discussion and that'll probably last at least one more meeting. And, um, Deputy Council President Chris Ray will be giving the report out on the Eastside Fire and Rescue Board meeting tonight. And that's my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on, uh, Wednesday, July 8th at 7:00 P.M. in Redden City Hall. No potential action by the body was discussed. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board met on Thursday, July 16th from 10:00 A.M. until noon. No potential action by the body was discussed. This concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Deputy Council President Ray.
Eastside Fire and Rescue Board of Directors met on July 9th at 4:00 P.M. and using a virtual meeting format. I attended with Councilmembers Goodman and Hall. The fire chief provided an update on PFOS, noting the completion of the latest round of testing, which has produced extensive data, which is being analyzed. And also, uh, kind of an interesting note, one of the things that they detected was that the water closer to the, uh, the subterranean water closer to the surface flows to the northwest, whereas the deeper water appears to be flowing to the northeast. So, uh, the water flows aren't as well understood as we thought they were. The chief provided a COVID-19 update noting the increase in the number of cases in the state. Eastside Fire and Rescue is taking precautions to minimize spread. One employee has been exposed off duty to COVID-19 and is quarantined as a precaution. And currently, out-of-budget expenses resulting from COVID-19 are approximately $478,000. The board had a discussion related to ambulance fees collection, ambulance fee collection. a discussion related to ambulance fees collection, ambulance fee collection. The board did not take any action this time on an increase in ambulance fees or enhanced collection efforts. The board discussed racial equity. Eastside Fire and Rescue is pursuing a partnership with Leadership Eastside to provide diversity in social justice educational programs. The King County Fire Chiefs are leading educational awareness discussions also across the region. Eastside Fire and Rescue completed their 2019 performance audit, and there were no findings. And then finally, the change in the Eastside Fire and Rescue governance model to a government not-for-profit was discussed. We forwarded the not, nonprofit bylaws, the Articles of Incorporation, and an interlocal agreement to the city administration for legal review. Discussion will be on Eastside Fire and Rescue's board meeting in October. And I think, as you all know, the chief has sent the City Council and the City Administrator a letter on July 18 with information regarding the changes in the governance model. And that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. On July 16, which is last Thursday, I met with the Salmon Recovery Council of Wyra 8, which is the technical name for our watershed. And we took several actions at that meeting. We approved the 2021 Wyra 8 budget and work plan. We approved the grant funding recommendations for Salmon Recovery Funding Board and Puget Sound Acquisition and Restoration Funds, also referred to as PSAR funds. And we approved our 2021 state and federal legislative priorities for salmon recovery for the Salmon Recovery Council. The next meeting of the Salmon Recovery Council will be on September 17. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Council President Hunt.
The next item on our agenda this evening is Mayor's report. There will not be an executive session this evening. And I have just a couple items to share with you all. We have two informational items this evening, providing some updates on COVID-19 and our community. I want to highlight one item being covered, the Issaquah Downtown Stretery. This concept was suggested by the Issaquah Recovery Task Force, a group of residents providing advice and guidance to the mayor's office on the safe reopening of our community. The stretery concept was strongly recommended by the task force as a way to assist local businesses and allow for a safe and family-friendly way to provide our residents with an opportunity to enjoy the summer and share a meal. It means we share the public right-of-way with our community by creating extra outdoor seating space. It felt like we could finally give ourselves a gift, or a small taste of what normal Friday and Saturday night life used to feel like. I attended both weekends of our pilot, and it was so heartwarming to see the smiles on everyone's faces as they got seated and began to loudly chatter. After the report out this evening, I'm proposing that with the Downtown Issaquah Association's assistance, we continue this through the end of September. We will continue to collect data and evaluate and adjust as needed to stay in conformance of the governor's order. In addition, we will keep in close contact with public health, Seattle and King County, on safety precautions and recommendations from health officials. King County remains in Phase 2 of the governor's phased reopening plan, and restaurants must still operate at a reduced capacity, offer table sizes no larger than five people, and keep bar area seating closed. In later phases, phases of the governor's reopening, new things may be added, like music. But for now, all this hangs on the fact that we must do all that we can do to stem the transmission rate of the virus and this terrible COVID-19 disease. Help me help our community by doing these three simple things. Wear a mask, stay at least six feet apart when unmasked, and wash your hands frequently. We can do this, Issaquah. The Washington State Department of Transportation is currently adding auxiliary lanes on I-90 in Issaquah. State crews are also building sound walls along Northwest Semamish Road, which requires the closure of the roads eastbound lane west of the State Park entrance to 193rd Place Southeast for 90 days, starting on July 27. And all eastbound traffic on Northwest Semamish Road will be detoured to I-90, and detours for cyclists will be provided. This project will also make room for the city to potentially add new pedestrian cyclist amenities in this area. Funding, however, is still needed and maybe years away. Issaquah is hosting a virtual neighborhood meeting with the South Lake Semamish residents on these projects at 7:00 P. M. August 12. A representative from Washtot will also tend to present on their agency's I-90 project and to answer questions. If you want to learn more about the project or subscribe for updates, please go to issaquahwa.gov/southlakesamish. And join us to learn more about the city's draft police accountability, equity, and human services action plan. We need to hear your feedback. We will be holding a virtual community meeting at 6:00 P. M. on July 29. The meeting will include presentations from myself, City Administrator Wally Bobkowitz, Police Chief Scott Birbaum, and include time for public comment. Please register on our website, and the link to join the meeting will be sent to you. If you aren't able to join us, please send feedback to mayor@issaquahwa.gov. A recording of the meeting will also be published on the city's YouTube page. All input will be shared with the City Council, which is scheduled to vote on a final version of the plan during its August 10 meeting. The next items of business tonight are informational. I'll start with ID 0727, which is COVID-19 update. And I'd like to ask City Administrator Bobkowitz to present this item.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. We have a couple different updates for you regarding our response to the COVID-19 crisis. If I could ask the Deputy City Clerk to, to put up the COVID-19 work plan. We have provided you this update document before. I just want to cover some highlights of some of the items on the work plan. We also will give a little bit deeper dive to two areas. I'll ask Monica Negrilla, our Human Services Officer, to talk a little bit about the status of the grant funding that the city has allocated through our CARES Act dollars. And Jen Davis Hayes, the Economic Development Manager, is here as well, and she'll do a little bit deeper dive into the stretery and to other economic development pieces of our work plan. We go to the next slide, the next page. Public safety was the first area that we focused on. And certainly, at the beginning of this crisis, we were very concerned about funding. We were very concerned about allocation of both police and fire resources. Some of those police issues have been taken up as part of the larger police accountability, human services, and equity action plan, which Mayor Polly referred to, and that, those discussions are continuing. So those issues that you see here regarding the police department largely have been picked up there. We will be presenting information on the jail update at July 28 study session. If you recall, we also reached out to Eastside Fire and Rescue regarding their current year budget issues. And unfortunately, we've not been able to make a lot of progress there on the current year, as both Councilmember Goodman and Deputy Council President Ray mentioned. There have been discussions regarding ambulance fees, and so those discussions are continuing. Certainly, my hope that Eastside Fire and Rescue will make some adjustments to those ambulance fees. And if they don't have an impact on 2020, they should hopefully have an impact on their 2021 budget. It's my hope, mayor's hope, that our costs to Eastside Fire and Rescue will be flat as we deal with our budget in the coming year. Mayor Polly, would you like me to stop at each of these sections, look for questions? Or would you just like me to go through and then have questions at the end?
Thank you for that. City Minister, I think what we'll do is, if I see a question pop up in a section, I will let you know. And right now, I'm not seeing any, so let's continue to the next session.
Very good. Public health and human services, the Issaquah Recovery Center, King County continues to operate the former Holiday Inn as a recovery center for those either diagnosed with COVID-19 or waiting test results. We're happy to say that that facility has operated really without much, much issue within the community. It's certainly helping many members of our community recover from COVID-19. So we continue to keep a close eye on the facility and on regular contact with King County Health regarding that. Social distancing compliance, we've gone through various stages of social distancing, and certainly, we have that still in full force here. But we continue to receive complaints about public spaces, about businesses. While the city of Issaquah is not in a position to be the enforcer of these issues, we certainly do reach out to business owners when issues are raised with us, and have our staff presence in our parks when issues are raised. So we're not meant to be the social distancing police, but certainly, we want to be mindful and thoughtful. And thus far, I think I've had some good success in having people comply with Governor Inslee's orders regarding social distancing. Housing security, we're going to talk more about that in the next item. So I'll leave that for the next discussion. Food security, our food security group continues to meet and discuss issues as they come along. We presented a food security dashboard back in June to the City Council. As far as mask distribution is concerned, we've been fortunate to get many thousand cloth masks from King County, thanks to our community emergency response team volunteers. We've had several days of opportunities for members of the public to come to a public place to pick up masks. We are expecting an additional shipment from King County soon. And once that shipment is received, we'll make additional time to move forward there. And then finally, the federal CARES Act funding. On June 22, the City Council allocated $200,000 of state CARES Acts funds for human services needs. And I'd like to ask Monica Negrilla of our Parks Integration Staff if she wouldn't mind coming on the line and giving a brief update there. And then we'll be happy to answer any questions, Madam Mayor, in this section.
Thank you. We do have a quick question from Councilmember Hall. I'm just going to let him sneak in here.
Oh, it was, thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. If it was a question about the food security dashboard, so if it makes more sense to wait for Monica to come on, I'm happy to do that, too. Update.
I'm not sure that Monica is talking much about that in detail. If you just want to throw the question out there, I'll let staff answer it as part of whatever they're presenting next. So what's your question?
Perfect. Yeah, just a clarifying question about trying to remember what the end goal is with the food security dashboard. Is that mostly just for your informing policymakers? Or did we have an end goal of putting all that data together?
So I'm just going to put my two cents in first, is I hope to use the data that Monica's collecting in lobbying efforts with federal, county, and state representatives. So for me, it's a tool to show people a detailed picture of what's really going on in the community. Monica has her own reasons for developing it. Monica?
Thank you so much. Good evening, Madam Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Monica Negrilla, and I'm Human Services Coordinator. So yes, in answering your question, in addition to advocacy efforts, I think the numbers help us track the number of people served and the costs that organizations accrue. So they can also help us in long-term planning and being able to be more proactive and just trying to catch those situations as they come early on instead of waiting for several months. So that's another reason why we use it. And then going back in answering City Administrator Bobkowitz's question, a brief update on the federal CARES Act funding. So far, we were able to draft up the contracts, and we also just received legal review on them. So we are ready to begin services. The initial allocations remained pretty much the same. The only difference is a $10,000 difference that one of the smaller organizations decided to give back, and therefore, we allocated that $10,000 to the food bank because the needs are the highest there. So other than that, all the other initial allocations remain the same for the $200,000.
And Monica, can you remind us how that was broken down?
Yes. So the food bank, the Issaquah Food and Clothing Bank, now gets $60,000. The original allocation was $50,000. Eastside Baby Corner gets $50,000. Eastside Friends of Seniors gets $30,000. The original allocation here was $40,000. Catali Community Services, the Meals Program, gets $30,000. And then Eastside Legal Assistance also gets $30,000.
Thank you, Monica.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, I'm not seeing any other questions on the Human Services side. So we'll move on next to finance, obviously. The council has spent a lot of time talking about budget this year. We've gone through two rounds of budget reductions. We will be coming back to you on August 11 with our mid-year budget report. I think as we have talked a little bit in recent weeks, our budget projections unfortunately seem to be on track with a 20% reduction in revenue. So still, what we're looking at, we'll have more precise numbers for you on August 11. The adjustments to the workforce, you're familiar with. The utility billing relief, unfortunately, only seven customers have applied for flexible payments. Two weeks ago, we did a large push on social media in order to make people aware of this. So we will continue to reach out periodically to inform folks that they need assistance, that that assistance is available. The federal CARES Act funding from the state of Washington, we've, we've talked about, was allocated on June 22. I think, as many of you are aware, the Congress is coming back into session in Washington, D. C. There, I think there's an expectation that there will be yet another package of relief coming from the Congress over the next several weeks. The National League of Cities, U. S. Conference of Mayors, other local government groups are pushing very hard for an inclusion of relief for state and the local governments. Unfortunately, doesn't seem like that's gaining a lot of traction. So we have not budgeted any additional anticipated revenue from the federal government. But I think we'll have a much better idea by the time we see you on August 11. Business and operations tax relief, we continue to track that very closely. We are identifying businesses that have made no payment and that are now in arrears for BNO taxes. And so we are moving forward with the process to remind those individual businesses that the payment is required, and we will continue to follow up on those outstanding payments. And then finally, we continue to hope that there'll be some FEMA funding coming as well for expenses associated with the COVID-19 crisis. We have not seen any specific dollars yet from FEMA. So the finance piece remains up in the air. Again, look to the August 11. The study session is being the next big update on where we are with finances.
Thank you, City Administrator Bobkowitz. You have a couple of questions on finance. We'll start first with Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. For the BNO tax relief, you marked that as complete for businesses less than $500,000 in gross revenue. What ended up being the plan there? It wasn't just the delayed filing, was it? Was there something else?
That was it. I think we need to probably broaden this just to, to monitor where we are with the, with the relief. So again, we're seeing a mixed bag on compliance for those who were not part of the $500,000 or less, of businesses more than $500,000. And so we're just going to have to monitor that carefully.
Okay. And do we have a plan to bring that data back to us at some point?
I imagine we'll have that as part of the August 11 meeting.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. Councilmember Hall has a question.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is City Councilmember Zach Hall. I had a question about the utility bill relief. I'm actually just thumbing through my handy-dandy City of Issaquah water quality report, because I haven't been there this week. I was wondering if it's possible for us to start advertising our utility relief program, especially around water. And that seems like it's kind of a missed opportunity that it's happening. So maybe there's some reason for it.
I think anytime we talk about putting something in the utility bills, the sheer amount of paper that is involved is something that we have to weigh. We have been putting information on envelopes. And so I will follow up with the finance staff to see, since the envelope is certainly a piece of paper we can't avoid, if there's an opportunity to use the back of the envelope as an, as a way to publicize that relief program.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. And thank you for that suggestion, City Administrator Bobkowitz, because I think it would be great to keep reporting out on this as we see participation increase. Next, you're on to communication.
Yes. Again, we've done a lot in the last several months between the mayor's newsletters, the information we've had on the website. We've done several neighborhood community forums, which I know you're aware of, and a few more are in the planning stages. We found that people are comfortable with using the video chat format to have these meetings. So we will continue to do that. We, Autumn Monahan, the assistant to the City Administrator, gave a report a couple of meetings ago on that. Clerk Gieser, next slide, please, next page. We've done a lot also with videos. We'll continue to do that with videos. We've been able to post the Recovery Task Force meetings online and segment out the particular discussions. Those have been very well received. And then And then the increased use of social media, Facebook, Twitter, Nextdoor, we're using that more and more in order to connect with people about what's going on on all facets of city government.
No questions.
Mayor Polly, I don't see any questions. I'm going to have Jen Davis Hayes at the end of, I'll give a brief overview of most of the items here, and then I'll have her pick up a few of them at the end. We continue to work with our partners, economic development partners, on the status of business operations. We've done a couple of different surveys. I think at this point, we're really just day-to-day, week-to-week, regular communications as to what is going on with businesses in Issaquah. The business support, certainly, the bi-local campaign, the Issaquah Loyal has been starting up. We did some advertising with that with the Fourth of July parade. We've got banners that are ready to go up, so we will continue to reinforce that bi-local campaign. On consumer support, we've talked a little bit about the social distancing protocols as we hear from businesses, patrons of businesses, we follow up with those restaurants. The Eastside app that has been used for restaurants continues to move forward. The suspension on the pass-through charge on recycled paper carryout bags, the suspension of that charge continues. However, Mayor Polly has informed the grocery stores that beginning August 1, they will need to go back to paper bags. So we have had communications from grocery stores and the grocery store industry here in Washington State concerned about that, and the mayor continues to meet with representatives of the grocery store associations to perhaps have a short-term waiver if those businesses can demonstrate that they are unable to purchase those bags. And Mayor Polly, I don't know if you wanted to share anything specifically about that. I know that you and Megan Curtis Murphy, our Sustainability Coordinator, have had conversations with the industry association.
Yes, thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. I have received numerous calls, complaints, emails from folks that are disappointed with the amount of plastic bag usage that's going on, and also suggestions about how, under the current COVID phase that we're in, could reusable bags come back into the forum? Is there a way that you can, you know, bag your own groceries, and signage could be put up encouraging you to do that, so that we get back off of the bandwagon of using plastic bags and even paper bags and using our own bags again? So those are sort of the two parts of our conversation. What can the market supply, and can we move into a safer protocol for bringing back your own bags? Kind of like a hallmark of Issaquah wanting to be out in front of us, so I feel now like this is the time to push again. Thank you.
Other items here, construction continues to move forward, and those restrictions have been lifted. Ms. Davis Hayes will talk in a moment about the CARES Act funding for businesses that we've been working on. I want to talk a little bit about Village Theater, and Councilmember Goodman reported on the lodging tax advisory committees declining to move forward with their request for $25,000 in funds for Village Theater. A similar request was made to the Arts Commission, and the Arts Commission agreed to that, so we will be coming back to the council on August 3 with the appropriate action to allocate that $25,000 to the Village Theater. Certainly, over the last several weeks, we've been hearing from our tourist-serving businesses, certainly in addition to the Village Theater, both mayor and I have been in touch with Cougar Mountain Zoo, and they're very disappointed at the support that they're getting from Visit Issaquah, the organization charged with tourism issues, other organizations that depend on tourists. Clearly, there's a disconnect, and it's something that I'm concerned about, and I know that members of the council and mayor are concerned about, and it's something that we'll continue to pursue. Visit Issaquah, as many of you know, received a little over $300,000 in city funds through the lodging tax this year. About $100,000 of that was for events that are not taking place. So is there an opportunity for that $100,000 to be repurposed to support those tourist-serving businesses that are really in some very difficult straits? The Cougar Mountain Zoo, for example, is open, and they are probably the largest business in Issaquah devoted to serving tourists that is actually open and operating, and they are struggling, and they would certainly appreciate help. I reached out to Councilmember Walsh a few days ago. She has some particular expertise in the area of internet marketing and advertising and use of social media, and so she graciously agreed to help them. But there's other businesses, other nonprofits, that really depend on tourists that I think as a city, we need to do a better job of connecting those needs with available dollars that are out there. So I plan to come back to the council in the next few meetings to talk further about this, but I think this is an emerging issue, an issue that really is going to require the city council's attention over the next few weeks. Next page, Clerk Gieser.
Before you go on, Administrator Bob Kowitz, I'd like to add something to that. It's been a very bizarre and challenging four months, and I think we are really using the mantra of everybody has to take a COVID lens to what they had planned to do for this year, and really think about resources and where they can have the most impact. So it's really not business as usual. We have to be creative this year. And just as one of our council members will be bringing up something good to the order, it's, again, encouraging all those partners that we work with to be very, very creative. This is a really ridiculously difficult time. So it's the same with tourism. We're also, we're taking that same lens to everybody. What are you doing different during COVID, and what can you do that can be most impactful? So thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Mayor, let me introduce Jen Davis Hayes, our Economic Development Manager, and let her touch a little bit on the streetery information that's included in your packet, and I know that she also wants to give you some other updates. Ms. Davis Hayes, is she on the line?
Yes, thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowitz. Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. I'm going to provide some more details about three items under the Business Recovery Plan. The first one is the small business grants that we have been working on. So as a previous council meeting, council authorized $550,000 for business grants, $500,000 of that for a Small Business Response Grant Program, and $50,000 for a Business Reinvention Grant. So that $500,000 pool was opened and accepting applications from July 1 to the 15. And since writing the memo in the packet, we've started to review the applications for eligibility and share some additional information. We received 220 total applications. The memo stated eight more because there were some duplicates and some test applications when we pulled that out. 140 of those applications, so over 60%, were either women-owned or minority-owned businesses. They collectively employ over 1,400 people, and they've collectively laid off over 8, I'm sorry, 500 people. If we were, if we were able to, if all of them received some funding, we would be able to save 700 jobs, and that would require us to spend over $2 million. So we won't be able to fund everybody, but we know that those that will receive funding will have a large impact on the business and on jobs here in Issaquah. So this week, we'll continue to review for eligibility and expect to announce awards by early August, and we'll provide a report of the summary application data and grant awardees to council in the future. The second grant program is the Business Reinvention Grant, and the Economic Vitality Commission met on July 15 to begin to create eligibility and review criteria. The concept of that grant is to support adaption and creative solutions that businesses have had to do because of COVID-19. So that could include new technologies, physical changes to businesses, and other aspects. We recognize that many businesses are very creative, so these are examples rather than must-be criteria. And the three members of the Economic Vitality Commission, along with ED staff, will be the review panel for that. The grant is expected to launch early August, and information will be posted on our website when details are finalized. One small thing to note, any business that receives a grant from the Small Business Response Grant Pool, that larger pool, will not be eligible for this funding. We want to make sure that we support as many businesses as possible in Issaquah. And then I was going to provide some more details about the streetery. You had a lot of input earlier in the meeting, and as we mentioned, we will be moving forward with the streetery until the end of September. Again, most of the information you heard or have read in the packet, the business impact, most of the restaurants have increased sales compared to previous week of COVID-19, and some as much as prior to COVID-19. Community response has been overwhelmingly positive, and the mayor continues to get emails, but had over 37 or so emails supporting, strong support from residents throughout the city. We believe that traffic and parking impacts were pretty limited. We've been doing traffic counts and monitoring parking. And about social distancing and masks, we recognize the need to do a little bit more of a signage the second weekend, and DEA distributed over 700 masks that second weekend. So again, really seeing that the public wants to follow those regulations and make sure they're being safe as well. So overall, we're excited that this, that this has been successful for most businesses, and we'll continue to work with businesses to be able to expand their business operations and remind people that it's not a gathering or social event, but it's a place to come and do business, and we know that our community members will respect that. And then the third one is just really quickly about Issaquah Loyal. So that is our bi-local program, and as council, I'm sorry, as City Administrator Bob Kowitz mentioned, that will, you'll begin to see posters and banners in this next coming week. We're going to be doing some social media ads and video push next week, and vision partners and businesses will also start to utilize the logo. We'll make that available next week. And so as right currently, the car magnets that were used for the Fourth of July are now on inspectors' cars for our Community Planning and Development Department, and so they're driving throughout the city as we speak. And later this week, we'll be getting some car clings, some window clings that will not only be for businesses to use on their windows, but also community residents to put on their cars to show their Issaquah pride. So those are the three items I have provided an update.
Jen, thank you. I just want, this is the mayor, I just want to make sure when you get those clings, there's seven set aside for our seven local residents who are here tonight.
Oh, yes, we will do that for sure. And so those, for others that are listening, we'll be providing them also to businesses throughout the city, so we'll make sure to be able to get those out broadly, and then once city halls are open, we'll have them there as well.
Thank you. City Administrator Bob Kowitz, is there additional presentation material, or are we through the informational item?
There's a couple more. If we could go to the next slide, the reduction in community services, I know we've done information about that. We're really stuck now in Phase 2, and we have reopened what we can for Phase 2. We are not going to be making any other changes until we get to Phase 3, and it's unknown at this point what that will be. So certainly, that has impacted all of our summer concerts, most of all of our community-serving summer activities. We continue to have day camps, properly social distance, but it's really had a huge impact on our ability to provide recreational services this summer. In the general area of recovery, the Issaquah Recovery Board continues...
Excuse me, City Administrator Bob Kowitz, you do have a council member wishing to make a comment before we move to recovery?
Sorry about that.
No worries. Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. I have been to the farmer's market almost every weekend, and I just wanted to take advantage of this opportunity to say what an incredible job the Parks Department has done in managing that and making it flow smoothly, be respectful to our vendors, and also keeping people distant and safe. It's remarkably well orchestrated, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Deputy Council President. Sorry, City Administrator Bob Kowitz, go ahead.
So on the recovery side, the Issaquah Recovery Board continues to meet every two weeks. They have a meeting coming up this Thursday. Issaquah School Superintendent Ron Thiele will be the guest, and he will talk about the school's plans for reopening. I think many of you are aware that the district has put forward a framework that they're getting community input on. The city is concerned about the impact on our operations of this, traffic issues, how buses will be used, and what we can do to support families if children are not in school in class five days a week. So that's a huge question mark, I think, for many in the community, and we're looking at ways that potentially we could be supportive in that effort, but the district has yet to make its final decisions. Hopefully, Superintendent Thiele will have more information for the board this coming Thursday. At its last meeting, it heard from the executive director of the Cougar Mountain Zoo and the Village Theater. Again, really reinforcing the difficulty that our tourist-serving businesses are having in the community, and that was a great discussion to hear, especially what the zoo has been through. The animals need to eat, and the information that we received really shows what a remarkable effort that the zoo has done to keep its doors open. So that was, I think, very instructive from the Recovery Board. In the area of social distancing protocols, this really refers to city operations. As you all know, our city office facilities remain closed to the public. Certainly, our police department, our field staff and public works operations, recreation services, facility maintenance, all continue to work, but we have many, many folks that are several months into working from home, and we continue to work with employees to look at what the world will be like when we come back to work. We really have no date for when city offices will be reopened. Many of our employees are concerned about their own children, if they go back to school or don't go back to school, and what flexibility we can provide our staff if they are entering the fall with school-aged children still at home, and they themselves are still at home. So we're working department by department to come up with plans that make sense for our own staff. We continue to make sure that those staff that are working at city facilities are wearing masks, keep appropriate social distancing. Next page, Clerk Gieser. And that's, I believe, the end of the list. So Madam Mayor, thank you. Members of the council, thank you for letting us go through this. It's been several weeks since we've had an opportunity to go through what we've done regarding the COVID-19 crisis. If there's any final questions, happy to answer them. Otherwise, that concludes our report.
There does appear to be another question. Before I go to the question, I just want to really, really thank the administration and the staff for the incredible work you've done to pivot so quickly and organize yourself so well in a response to COVID, and be able to clearly articulate what all those different steps and changes were. I think it's been outstanding. And we will go to Councilmember Hall for a question.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. Just a real quick ask to these departmental discussions on childcare and flexibility for employees. Can you keep us in the loop on that as that develops? That's interesting.
Certainly.
We absolutely can. Thank you, Councilmember Hall. So it looks like we are at the end of questions or comments for that item, and I'm going to go to Council President, oh, sorry, did I not do that yet? I'm going to go to Council President Hunt to ask if the council had received any email comments to summarize on this item.
Thank you. Yes, we did receive many email comments, mostly in regards to the streetery. We also received a comment regarding the business grants that the person that wrote to us was not in favor of the random selection process of selecting businesses for the CARES Act funding business grants and would be in favor of a more structured way of giving that funding. And then regarding the streetery, Jen Davis Hayes did give an overview. I just wanted to reiterate, we received, I counted about 35 or so, we received several more today, positive comments about the streetery from both people that attended and people that were the business owners or were working in the businesses that participated in the streetery. Some of the, some of the other comments were around more signage and more awareness in terms of having banners or having more information for folks about what was actually going on and why there was a detour and why the street was closed. Additionally, there were comments about liking to be outdoors and the effect of the weather and a number of other things that also came up in the public comments. So those were overwhelmingly positive, and then we did also receive some comments that were opposed to the continuation of the streetery. One person that wrote to us was concerned about retail being hurt by the closure of the street, and additionally, one restaurant that was also, that also was opposed to the closure of the street because of the effect on business. And then additionally, there were some suggestions about changes to times. So there was some people who wanted it to be changed, for example, from 3:00 to midnight on Friday and Saturday, and then some other changes about different timing that might better accommodate different sorts of businesses, and also, I think... better accommodate different sorts of businesses and also, I think, accommodate traffic. Let's see. And then also, there was some comments to the effect of that we really need to be consistent about the need for wearing masks and the safety measures that are so important to keeping this sort of event continuing.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. And I am going to go to Councilmember Goodman for a question.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. We did have a question from the public about the city's overall costs in the streetery. And so I think the question really is about total costs, including in-kind costs. Is there a sense of what the total costs are? This is probably something for the administrator.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman, I'll ask Jen Davis Hayes to give sort of a general estimate, both of staff time and then the costs associated with the equipment that was needed.
Thank you.
Yeah, so the cost, actual cash costs, which have included for equipment rental and signage and some overtime, has been about $14,000. And now that equipment rental cost will not have to be spent again because we have that through December for the equipment rental. And then as far as staff hours, we have not tracked that closely. At least, I don't have that at my fingertips, I should say. But I would say we probably have put in, you know, probably with both Stephen Padua and myself, maybe about 20 hours a week plus in the weeks that it happened and then some planning hours before that. So we can get the exact numbers for you, but I think now that it will be continued, it'll be less ramping up and unraveling, which took a lot of time once we decided to put a pause on it, which was understandable.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Goodman, if I could just add, we also have overtime associated with the actual setup and takedown of the barricades. So Ms. David Hayes and Mr. Padua's time is generally straight time, so it's not an additional cost, but there is the cost associated with the setup and takedown. It's minor.
Sure.
It's a couple of hours on either side.
Sure. I just think it was a good question in the interest of transparency, just to know what the overall costs are for this program. But that seems to be overwhelmingly popular anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. City Administrator Bob Kowicz, I'm not sure if it was in the presentation materials or not, but if there is additional funding made available through CARES or HEROES or whatever it is, would these costs be eligible for reimbursement?
Based on, Madam Mayor, members of the council, based on the current criteria that the State Department of Commerce and the federal government has, yes, it would.
Thank you. Helpful. I didn't know if that had been included or not. I am not seeing any additional questions at this time. I did sort of mess up Council President's input on emails because we went section by section instead of a complete staff presentation. So for the next presentation, Council President, I will be going to you after the staff presentation is done, prior to questions and answers. So the next item is ID 0730, Housing Stability During COVID-19 Emergency. And I'd like to ask Human Services Coordinator Monica Negrilla to make a presentation. And Monica, if you are talking, you are muted.
I was talking, thank you so much. And I totally thought I was just, I was carrying on, so thank you. Yes, this is Monica Negrilla again. Thank you so much, Mayor Pauli. And with that, Tisha, we can begin the slide. We can move to the next one. So tonight, I'm here to provide an informational update on housing stability during the COVID-19 emergency. First, I will provide a brief overview of what housing stability is within the local and national context of the current pandemic. And following that overview, I will provide some housing options available to residents in our community and some actions the city can take to provide support. We can move to the next slide. So in preparing this report, we received input from legal assistance programs that help residents with tenant and landlord issues, such as King County Bar Association or Eastside Legal Assistance Program. We also heard from rental assistance providers, such as the United Way Home Base Program or our local providers, Isakua Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul. We heard from residents and then also some other local and regional entities. Next slide, please, Tisha. So while housing stability is defined in general terms as having choice over when and under what circumstances a household wants to move, the concept is more complex because housing stability or lack thereof has long-term consequences on all aspects of a person's life, from physical and emotional health, access to quality education, to social and recreational activities, employment, and so on. And so in the context of the COVID-19 crisis, we recognize that across the nation, millions of people are experiencing significant housing instability. And as you can see, statistics are somber. Isakua is not an isolated case. According to the most recent data, about 32% of the households nationwide were unable to make their July payments in full. In our state, only nearly 248,000 households had overdue rent in June. And then locally here in Isakua, based on a brief survey conducted by our local rental assistance providers, an average of 20% of the 1,300 units from 12 different apartment complexes surveyed are currently behind in rent. This translates to an estimated $1.1 million in overdue rent. Of course, local income and low-income and affordable housing providers experience the highest percentage of tenants with overdue rent, and this reaches sometimes 50% to 60%. In your attachment, in your agenda packet, I'm sorry, the attachment provides a specific information regarding individual apartment buildings. So while preventive measures meant to minimize the housing instability created by the pandemic have been implemented early into the crisis, I think we must recognize that needs far outweigh the resources. And I personally believe that it takes the whole community working together to find solutions and options moving forward. We can move to the next slide. Tisha, thank you so much for helping with that. So next, I will review, I will provide a brief overview of the existing and planned efforts to help address housing instability, as well as some opportunities for action and support. Specifically, I will review federal and regional advocacy options, some city policy considerations, rental assistance, and some other strategies we might want to consider. Next slide. So for federal and regional advocacy options, the agenda packet includes a sample of bills currently in Congress that directly or indirectly address housing stability. These are at various degrees in the process of becoming the law, and some of them are more likely to be successful than others. New bills are being introduced frequently, though, and therefore monitoring can be challenging. However, advocacy efforts can be meaningful, and if successful, they can be quite impactful for our community members. Regionally, in our state, I would like to call out two opportunities for advocacy. One is for the recently announced CARES Act funding allocations of $110 million towards an eviction rent assistance program by the Department of Commerce. Advocacy opportunities here include ensuring a wide and equitable distribution of funds, timeframe for funds distribution, as well as program implementation. Regional rental providers have expressed concerns regarding the short timeline allotted for spending the money, which is October 2020, and the risk of leaving money on the table due to the length of time that it takes to process these applications. So definitely advocacy opportunity there. The other advocacy opportunity includes King County, where a total of $600,000 in community development block grants, CDBG. These are specific for coronavirus. Funds for rental assistance are available to small cities in the Northeast subregion, which includes Isakua. The estimated share for Isakua, if equal distribution of funds is made, is approximately $35,000 to $45,000. Asking the county to release funds rapidly for distribution and ensure fair access to all participating jurisdictions, again, could help our community members and just draw some money to our community. Next slide, please. Next, in terms of some city policy considerations, what you have in front of you are some city-specific ordinances that we can review in further detail, should the governor not extend the moratorium on or before August 1st. Quick note, Seattle and King County recently passed ordinances providing for tenant protections, and the table provides a summary of the options included. Next slide. In terms of rental assistance, the following is a list of current and upcoming rental assistance programs available to residents and landlords, locally and regionally. We just talked about the Department of Commerce money and King County CDBG. In addition to those two, the Seattle Foundation recently allocated funds for rental assistance, and there are two organizations that we contract with, excuse me, that also serve Isakua residents. One is the Muslim Community Resource Center, MRC, which received $100,000, and they serve all residents regardless of religion, ethnicity, or affiliation. And also India Association of Western Washington, who received $25,000. In addition, the East King County Community Fund recently was created, and they are currently raising funds. Their goal is to raise initially $2 million for the East King County. Imagine Housing, the rental assistance program they created recently, they started with $100,000 towards rental assistance for Imagine Housing residents. And then, of course, our two small organizations continue to provide rental assistance at this time, Isakua Community Services and St. Vincent de Paul. So in addition to funding, consideration may also be given to some ideas that we heard, and we thought that they were more creative in terms of rental assistance, such as, as I just mentioned, building capacity and providing for opportunities for different organizations to collaborate so they can help each other. Then work with rental assistance providers to consider temporary negotiations with landlords to accept 80% of the rent, as an example, as full satisfaction of rent obligations with no late fees. Or just negotiate with larger developers in bulk and sign collective agreements just to help with timeline and efficiency. And with that, we can move to the next slide. For some other strategies to consider, I heard earlier tonight about needing to come up with creative ideas and strategies during the COVID crisis. And personally, I've been involved, and I hear from so many residents or smaller organizations, and I hear many creative ideas. Recently, for example, I heard from a bride who had her wedding canceled, and she decided to donate in food the deposit that they had put towards food, and so they used that deposit to donate the food to one of the meals programs. I also heard, for example, from a retired professional in the banking industry who wanted to provide services and so forth. So I think that involving the community at large, identifying the volunteer professionals with expertise in various domains, from business to finances, banking, or social services, inviting faith-based organizations to be actively involved, partner and serve during these times, can provide for opportunities to identify joint and creative solutions. And so possible actions to consider could include technical assistance for supportive housing providers, financial education and consultation for residents, retraining, employment and educational programs, or even forming a collaborative community group, similar with the Food Collaborative, just for housing stability for Isakua only. And with that, moving to the next slide, I think I can pause for discussion and next steps. We really would love to hear council's feedback, and then also some assistance in shaping the next steps.
That is great. Thank you, Monica. I have a couple of folks lined up with questions. I believe it's Councilmember, oh, sorry, before we go to questions, not going to do this again, I'm going to Council President Hunt to summarize any emails you may have received. That's President Hunt.
Thank you. We did receive an email from a resident that specifically touched on this topic, and the resident was aware that Mayor Pauli and myself had written a letter to Governor Inslee seeking an extension of the eviction moratorium and was supportive of that, and wrote that this resident was terribly worried that this was going to crash into Isakua with ripple effects that we are not prepared for. And then additionally, wrote that this resident would be supportive of providing direct assistance to ensuring that families with children that received rental assistance would be at the 50% AMI housing level. So that would be the most in need, I believe, was the intent there. And that concludes the comments that we received on this.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. We'll move to council questions and start with Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. This is Councilmember Zach Hall. I have a few questions. The first was about advocacy, and so I kind of wanted some clarity around that. Would that be advocacy through our contracted lobbyists, like Shelley Holger, or would that be asking council members to write emails to folks, or are we envisioning that process?
Great question. I'm going to let Monica take a stab at that. I've been working with her quite closely over the last four months and listening to her contacts out in the region about when and where to push a button or pull a lever. So Monica gives some suggested advice and potentially how we can coordinate our voice so we can amplify our voice.
Right, exactly. Thank you so much. Yes, while definitely we can use our lobbyists, I think it's always, it makes a strong statement if we have letters from the mayor and the council. I think just recently, the letter that we sent to the governor, I think, had so much more power than if it's just a lobbyist. However, I think that if we can join efforts with also the regional groups, whether that is the Sound Cities Association, or whether it's the Human Services Forum, or all other regional advocacy efforts, I think the more, the merrier. But I do see being very impactful if we have letters from council and the mayor also. And so I would love to help draft those.
Councilmember Hall, thank you, Monica. I'll also remind you that there was an email that went out, I can't believe it was maybe last week, about our Congress getting back in session, and Monica gave some great details tonight in her housing slides that would make great content. So I think we have a draft letter, but you can just grab her numbers and really paint a picture for the Congress members about the dire straits that some people are in. So I love the data. Thank you, Monica, for that. That was great. And if you hear of opportunities that we are not necessarily aware of, where we may add our voice collectively, please point them out to the administration. That'd be very, very helpful. I'm going to go to Councilmember DeMichele.
Thank you. This is Councilmember DeMichele. First of all, I want to thank Monica for a really superb bit of research and really putting some data in our hands that we can really use. And so very thankful and grateful for that report that she put together. I have been in discussion with people in the community about this looming crisis, and so I had a couple of questions that I thought might be of interest to people in the community. The first one, Monica, is do we have comparative data to tell us, for example, what percentage of people a year ago or even pre-COVID were behind in their rent? And can you give us a kind of an idea of the magnitude of how much more this is? Is it two times more, three times more than the usual number of people who are behind in their rent? Could you- who are behind in their rent? Could you, could you just speak to that?
Great question.
Yes, thank you. Um, I have a partial answer uh, to your question. Um, while I do not have um, a specific information for all the apartment complexes um, from two thousand nineteen, I, I do have anecdotal information from one of the low-income housing providers, uh, who did report that typically um, ten to fifteen percent of um, their renters um, are behind in rent, whereas now it is fifty to sixty percent. Um, and then the other information that I have for you is from our rental assistance providers. I do have their quarterly reports, and I just um, glanced recently at the quarterly report from um, last year, two thousand nineteen, for quarter two, and just the reports that we just got in this week for two thousand twenty. And the numbers uh, for people that they assisted last year compared to this year had doubled. So I think that that's um, that gives us some information. But I would be happy to circle back and provide additional information also.
Uh, and then the other question that was brought up was um, and I, and I do think this is something that people, for, for whatever reason, think that the unemployment checks are uh, there to, you know, that people are doing fine because they're getting unemployment checks, and um, and then I think they forget about the context of how much it costs to live in Issaquah. So could you, I, I'm sure you've talked to people who are having a difficult time, even though they're getting an unemployment check.
Right, and I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not sure if I know exactly the question, just to, just to explain. Sorry.
Yeah, I, the question to me was, well, doesn't the unemployment check cover their rent?
Yeah, yeah, certainly, probably, most of the time now, the, the average rent in Issaquah is about um, twenty-two uh, half per month, and so that's average. And so, um, especially for those who um, might have had um, jobs in retail or um, restaurant business, um, the unemployment will not fully cover that, so.
Okay, thank you for, for those clarifications. And then one last question, for people who are, are facing this challenge, who are new, never had perhaps had to think about being uh, evicted, um, what is the best place that they can, where is the best place uh, for them to get help? Would they, would that be calling you, or the Food and Clothing Bank? Or where, where would be the place for people to be uh, advised to go?
Right, definitely the Food and Clothing Bank receives and accepts um, calls and emails um, on a regular basis. We do have residents who contact me, and depending on their needs, then I refer them um, to those services or other services. Also, our um, rental providers have their information on their website. So there are multiple ways for um, residents to, to seek help, whether that's through us or directly through the organizations.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. Um, Monica, at one point, at the beginning of the crisis, did we not also put some information out to our service providers that they could share such as uh, East Side Legal Assistance Program, and just letting them know? Um, we did that at the beginning, I believe, of this crisis.
That, yes, you're, you're correct, Mayor Polly, and that information is still uh, available on our website, uh, under the COVID nineteen crisis page.
And we have a food convening conference coming up on Friday, I believe, or soon. Um, and we could check in with the food bank as well, to see if they thought that was successful, to see if they think that the numbers are continuing to climb, and they would like us to do more of that, and maybe even update the information in case anything has changed, because a lot has happened in four months. Thank you. Uh, more questions. Uh, Councilmember Goodman.
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. Um, Monica, thank you very much for the information. Uh, you mentioned the King County Housing Homelessness and, uh, Homelessness and Community Development Division, um, the six hundred thousand dollars in the CDBG, um, CB, funds for rental assistance, and that we have advocacy opportunities there. Um, I didn't, I think you meant, I think I heard that there was a portion of that that was available to Issaquah. I thought I heard thirty thousand, but um, so if you could clarify that, and then uh, what do we need to do to advocate to actually get that money released as soon as possible? How can we help?
Yes, thank you. Um, so the six, the, the total of six hundred thousand dollars is available for the small cities on the North and East Side region who do not um, have, we, they're either, who do not have direct contracts with the county, or do not receive direct contracts through HUD. Um, and so there are about twelve to fourteen jurisdictions. And so all of us have um, um, access to that pot of money. And if the money would be allocated equally to all of those, then we would get about thirty-five to forty-five thousand dollars. Um, the county at this time did not decide on how they will distribute the money. Um, their initial thoughts were that they will put the money towards the rental assistance uh, through United Way. Uh, however, after feedback received from jurisdictions, then they listened and heard from all of us um, regarding the um, local providers that each jurisdiction's work, works with. And so at this point, they're still deciding um, and taking all of that uh, into consideration, deciding how they are going to distribute the money. And so therefore, I think there's an opportunity for our council um, to um, perhaps uh, send a letter um, um, to, to the county, um, just maybe outlining what we as staff already provided for input, that yes, we do need the money, and we would like to have access to that money. And that, in addition to that, um, that, you know, it would be helpful to have that released as soon as possible, because the initial um, uh, conversation started in, I want to say May, early May, um, and so a decision has not been yet taken. So there's, there's money available there that would be nice to.
Sure.
Provide to residents.
And then I had a um, second question, if I may, or do you want me to come back to it?
Um, I think a second question is fine. I just want to tell Monica that we wanted to draft the letter. Because we'll take every, we will take every opportunity to advocate with our biggest possible voice we can, so please work on a letter that um, we can sign. And at some point during comments, the council can decide if they all want to sign it, or they want to direct the council president to sign it, so, okay, great. Councilmember Goodman, second question.
Sure. Um, Monica, you, you, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that, that the needs outweigh the resources, um, which is not a surprise. You also said um, that it was in your um, opinion that this needed to be a community-wide effort. And I wondered if you could um, expand on that a little bit about what you meant, please.
Thank you. Um, I think, yes, what I meant is um, perhaps what I um, also referred to uh, at the end, uh, we hear from many uh, community members who are willing to provide volunteer hours, expertise, and uh, we also hear about fundraisers. And perhaps if there's a way for us to um, increase our education to our community, that it's, it's not just the city, or it's not just um, the very large corporations, uh, such as Microsoft or um, Google that can make a difference, that perhaps just every small effort that everyone can make, could make a big difference. So I think that's what I meant, uh, is just trying to look for those opportunities. It's, it's hard, hard, heartwarming when I hear from, uh, whether that's a small church group of three members who is willing to do deep cleaning uh, for seniors, or for some meals programs, or whether there's, like I mentioned, the, the bride who wanted to donate her four hundred dollars, um, so, so these are the things at the time I was referring to.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for the question, Councilmember Goodman. And Monica, just to take that point a little bit further, one of the suggestions I've heard in other cities is that if there is a second stimulus check, we are definitely not all feeling the pain in the same way, and for those that are fully employed, with both family members fully employed, maybe not feeling much pain at all. And there is definitely an opportunity in a generous community like ours to do something where we can ask those that can to donate their second stimulus check if it comes for a rental assistance program, and provide it directly to one of those two agencies, without us having to be a middleman handler. So thank you for bringing that up. That's a really great suggestion. I am going to go to Council President Hunt.
Thank you. Um, so council allocated, I think, uh, in March, I believe, um, about a hundred thousand dollars for, or exactly a hundred thousand dollars for rental assistance, which went to the two local organizations um, in Issaquah. And I, so my first question is, I believe that that funded the needs for those organizations for two months. Is that correct?
Uh, yes, approximately two months. Uh, one of the organizations um, um, distributed the funds in about six weeks, and the other one at eight weeks.
Okay, and then I wondered if, in your estimation, if that rate of spending, the rate of need and dispersment of funds would continue now, or if it's substantially different now?
Um, it, it's a little bit of both. If, um, so their numbers have been steadily increasing, um, not, um, they haven't seen huge increases. So if, if the moratorium uh, gets extended and the numbers steadily increase, I think we would see a similar um, distribution pattern, except for one of the organizations, uh, the smaller one, Saint Vincent de Paul, recently they told us that they had a significant um, drop in their volunteers, so then for them, it would take a longer time to distribute. Um, and perhaps um, we should consider a smaller allocation. Uh, but other than that, that would be a similar um, pattern. Now, if the um, moratorium eviction does not get extended in August, then it's, and we don't know what we are going to see. Any capacity would be a concern for sure.
Thank you. Thank you, Council President Hunt, uh, and back to Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Uh, Councilmember Zach Hall here, again. I'm interested in this financial counseling to renters. What would the logical next step be there? Is that identifying organizations that do that work locally, or would we think, would we think we could do that in-house?
Um, I, I'm not aware that we could do that in-house, uh, but that's definitely a topic for discussion. Um, I did hear uh, from a couple of volunteers, so I think the next step would be to definitely reach out to see if their organization's doing that already, and some are doing that, um, but perhaps a little bit different. And then also reaching out to the community and identifying those volunteers, so creating that, that group of um, experts for that opportunity, um, and then connecting them uh, with um, the housing providers and residents and tenants, so.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. I am not seeing any other questions at this time. Monica, I want to thank you. Um, I think in four short months, many, oh, there are a few more. I'll, so I'll leave my comments to the end. Let's go to Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Um, thank you. I, I wanted to have um, some time for a discussion for myself or for anybody else that wanted to comment on this topic, um, because we are approaching the end of the eviction moratorium. Um, it's currently planned for August first, which is rapidly approaching. The last two times it's been extended, it has been extended either a day before or two days before it was um, going to end. And so it is definitely possible um, that it, that it might be extended. And the mayor and I did write a letter um, to Governor Inslee, requesting that it be extended for the um, benefits to renters that it is providing, and the sort of safety, safety net that it's providing right now. Um, but at the same time, I have to think that uh, it's very, very stressful for renters right now to not know if the eviction moratorium is going to end um, in a few weeks, and to have rents due on August first, and to have this moratorium also potentially ending, uh, the moratorium on evictions potentially ending that same day. Um, and then all of the complications right now around family members taking in other family members if they were evicted because of the pandemic, um, and all of the associated job loss having to do with the pandemic as well. It just is, it must be so, um, so stressful right now for renters that are in these different positions where they don't know what will be coming. Um, and I think, I think it's one of our main, it's going to be a, a big challenge right now, because um, one thing we know is that it's much, it's, it takes a lot, less, less resources. Um, it takes a huge amount of resources to get people back into housing once they've lost their housing. Um, it's much preventative measures that keep people housed and that provide that safety net for people are, are well worth it, I think. Um, so I wanted to, to talk with council about what we think we can do. Um, Monica mentions that it's a community effort. There are many generous people in our community that would give their time and energy, as well as funding if they are able to support this. But I think that the city should also consider what the city can do. Um, again, I think preventative measures right now are really important to consider. And then the other thing is, um, I am very interested in King County's, uh, King County for unincorporated county has instituted this um, payment plan requirements. And I wondered if we might consider a program for rental assistance that would have a payment plan um, requirement, so that you would have sort of both very individual, or um, property owners that would enter into receiving funding for late rents would also um, enter into a payment plan-type program where they would work with their tenants. Because that seems like something that we really need, to have that cooperation between landlords and tenants. Um, so I, I hope to hear from other council members on what they think the city's role is here, but I really think we put forward a hundred thousand before, and it lasted about two months. This could be um, the difference between being housed and not housed for hundreds of families if we consider doing something now. So um, the time is now, because we don't know if this eviction moratorium will continue.
Council President Hunt, did you want um, our city attorney to answer the question about what tools are legally available, or do you want to hear from the council first, just to take the temperature uh, on the question that you asked?
Um, my preference would be to hear from the council, because I think what I'm, what I'm proposing um, would not be something, unless the um, city attorney has concerns about something I said, I don't think that anything, um, I, I don't think I have a legal question in there.
Okay, thanks. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Uh, City Councilmember Zach Hall here. I just want to piggyback off all that and um, echo those comments that preventative measures now going to be, first and foremost, are incredibly necessary, and will pay off evidence in the long run, I believe, if we're thinking about it from a numerical perspective, but then we can also think about it from a story perspective. I mean, I live literally right next to the YWCA building here, and to think that potentially fifty percent of the people that I know are struggling with rent between one and two months, rent behind, is difficult. So clearly, we need to do something. So I have um, a couple of comments, if council would um, indulge me. Um, being the member of um, for Issaquah on the Affordable Housing Committee, um, I have a couple comments on some things that we're doing there, that I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware of. And then I have some comments on directions, things that I'm interested in moving forward. Um, so the Sound Cities Association block of the Affordable Housing Committee, uh, we're actually working on a letter right now urging Governor Inslee and legislative leaders uh, to enact statewide solutions. Um, I'll just echo though that I read um, that we shouldn't wait around for statewide solutions. Um, so included in this letter is an ask to request landlords and tenants uh, to enter into a reasonable tenant plan before eviction proceedings can occur. And additionally, we're asking for statewide legal defense for tenants unable to make rent due to the COVID nineteen emergency, uh, and also that all pandemic eviction proceedings are prohibited from being made public, um, because a lot of those proceedings follow an individual, impact their ability to attain future rental housing. Then finally, oh, we're also um, asking for additional grant funding to be made available to nonprofits, looking to meet increased need, especially for organizations serving communities of color. So. So in terms of things that I would like to see the city, uh, move forward on, um, and, and at, at, at the end of council conversation, I would very much like to hear, um, what our city attorney thinks. Um, on some things, I think it's worth rolling the dice no matter what now. Um, so one that, one thing that I'm in favor of is requiring that landlords and tenants enter into reasonable payment plans. And if, to the extent possible, I would really like to see that that be a first step or first option before eviction proceedings, um, proceed, um, because someone could walk into a room and say, no, I've got the legal fence here, you know, COVID-19 bit and I lost my job and, or I got COVID-19, I wasn't able to make rent. Um, but then that eviction proceeding, even though it failed, still follows that. I mean, it's ridiculous. Um, I think, so that, that's the second thing. I think we should also provide tenants legal defense to eviction, um, they need, to the extent that that's legal, I'd like to have a conversation about that. Uh, and then I'm also interested in this, I think Monica said, a collaborative group. I think it's quite, you know, we have the Food Security Collaborative. I think having a housing security collaborative is an excellent idea. Um, and then I'm, I'm eager to have conversations too about additional rental assistance, however it could be beneficial. But I think that these other legal policy questions are important for right now. So anyways, that's my two cents. Thanks for letting us view.
Thanks, Councilmember Hall. Councilmember DeMichele?
Thank you. This is, uh, Councilmember DeMichele. I really appreciate the fact that, uh, Council President, Council President Hunt has brought up, uh, this issue and is opening it up for discussion. Um, I, I definitely could support, uh, the city stepping up, uh, and providing some more rental assistance. I do wanna raise the issue of, um, and, um, to give the context here, I attended, uh, an Eastside Rental Crisis Workshop that Elizabeth Maupin has been very involved with. Uh, and one of the issues that was raised was, uh, the issue of, um, what I would call mom and pop landlords, uh, people who are not large renters, but maybe have one house or two houses or, uh, you know, a place that they're renting and, uh, how do we, and, and they may be very dependent on that income for their own retirement or their own financial plans. So I'd wanna be sure that we, um, are thinking about those folks who may not be one of the big rental associations, um, and, um, that we are thinking about them as well because they're economically impacted as well. And, um, then the next level up was, uh, the nonprofit, um, rental associations like Imagine Housing and others, who again are probably operating on a very thin, uh, margin. So, uh, what can we do to, uh, as Councilmember Hall said, what can we bring, do to bring landlords and tenants together and try to find solutions that, um, where maybe everybody has to give a little, but, uh, we keep everybody as whole as possible. Um, and I like the other solutions that were, uh, put forward such as having a coalition of housing, um, a housing coalition. Another idea that I've seen is, um, seeing if we could work with landlords, uh, to reduce their, uh, rents, yeah, by let's say 20%. I'm just throwing that out. Uh, and then the city, rather than giving, um, assistance to the renters, actually makes, tries to make the landlords whole by making up the, the deficit there. That might work, it might not. I, it's just an idea that I thought had some, some merit to it. So overall, I, uh, you know, it's astonishing, the numbers that we're seeing. Um, it also reveals once again how some people are doing very well in, uh, the United States and some people are just on the edge and one or two paychecks away from disaster. And now it's really coming home to roost that that is the situation in our country. So I would support, uh, doing, I, I would wanna see a plan, but, uh, I would support, um, helping people who are nearing crisis in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember DeMichele. Councilmember Goodman?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Goodman here. Um, I hope, um, Barb didn't get cut off. I, my, 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 my computer froze, so when she came back, it sounded like Mary Lou was cutting off Barb saying, "Thank you."
She was able to finish. Thanks.
Okay. Um, so, uh, I have a question about, um, I do wanna hear from, um, our attorney about what we can, what we can do legally because the, um, we have a residential, um, uh, Landlord Tenant Act in Washington that is fairly thorough. And so I don't know what, um, what kind of room there is for the city to make its own rules on that. And so I'm interested in that. I'm also interested in the, um, in, um, our attorney addressing the eviction process. And the reason I'm asking is because of the, um, the notion that it's, um, we're sort of at the 11th hour now. Um, and my understanding is the eviction process, um, is a semi-lengthy one. So you don't, somebody doesn't pay their rent on the first and you go in on the second, they get booted out. So I just wanna make sure we're all on the same, um, page here. Um, and then I had a question about, um, and I, um, I've brought this up before about landlords, and so I appreciate, um, Councilmember DeMichele bringing it up again, in that, um, we, we do have a very tenant-friendly state and, um, maybe not completely germane to tonight's conversation, but one thing that concerns me is the, uh, the more and more difficult it is for landlords to have rental properties, um, it, the more, the more we, um, are at risk of losing rental properties. And that would be an unintended consequence that I don't think we should, um, not just us as Issaquah Council, um, but I'm hoping that, um, the state and jurisdictions keep their eye on, uh, because it, it is already difficult to be a landlord and it's even more difficult to be a mom and pop landlord, as Barb mentioned. So, um, then the other question I had is, have we thought about possibly convening local landlords, um, to see how we might be able to help? Um, and I don't pretend to know what that help might look like, uh, but anyway, it's just a thought that I had.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Um, I'm hoping that our city administrator is keeping track of the various asks in here. I'm hearing, uh, more funding to go to rental assistance. I'm hearing about the city's ability to do a convening of landlords versus bringing eight people to the table with food convenings, trying to bring landlords together and tenants together in town. Seems like, uh, much more significant ask, and that's something I'm gonna have Monica respond to. And also the legality of, are there things that you can do to push a lever, or push a button or move a lever to make a difference? And not just something on paper that says you can't evict, but it's not enforceable in court. So there are, or even payment plans. So where those are. I see Councilmember Mart has a question, and if we can sort of get everything out on the table, it would allow me the opportunity to have our, uh, city attorney, our staff person, and our city administrator respond. Councilmember Mart?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. More of a comment than a question, but, um, I like the idea in general of sort of the, uh, first look to facilitation. Is there, is, do we have a role in facilitation? Secondly, do we have a role in eviction avoidance? And then third, do we have a role in direct rental assistance? Um, in terms of direct rental assistance, I guess my fundamental question is, can we move the needle? If we had a, if we invested a certain amount of money, um, I'm looking at about a six-month time horizon. I'm saying, what could we do for six months? What sustained level of effort for X number of dollars? Uh, if, if we had X number of dollars, um, you know, I see this number of 1.1 million. I'm assuming that's 1.1 million per month. That's not a stack-up of like three months' worth of rent. If it's 1.1 million per month, that's a lot, right? That's, you're not gonna, you're not gonna write a check to cover everybody for the next six months, uh, from, from city coffers. So, um, if we were to help, how, you know, what, what, A, um, uh, what AMR, uh, you know, AMI, sorry, uh, you know, what AMI threshold would we be at? And what would be the sort of outline, uh, or contours, if you will, of what an assistance could look like? I wouldn't wanna do something that was, um, just a showboat. Um, if, if, if it was just something that was scratching the surface, I would rather look to see an investment with some of our housing partners. If, if by direct rental assistance, we couldn't make a substantial substantive impact. And what is a substantive impact? I don't know. I'll, I'll know it when I see it. Uh, so, sorry, I can't be more definitive, but those are, those are my thoughts as of this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. Circling back to Council President Hunt.
Um, so a clarification from, um, for Monica would be about that 1.1 million and what timeframe it was representing.
Thank you. I'm looking in the chat box and don't see a lot of additional comments. And so I'm going to start with Mr. Haney to see if he can provide some legal perspective on the questions. And Jim, if you need to ask the councilmembers questions to dig in a little more, please feel free to do so.
Yes, well, first, uh, let me say that I'm not an, an expert on the landlord tenant, Residential Landlord Tenant Act. Um, so, but it is my understanding that as Councilmember Goodman said, the Landlord Tenant Act does have, um, fairly detailed provisions relating to evictions, uh, and, uh, both in terms of the grounds for eviction and in terms of the process. And it is a fairly lengthy process. It does involve the landlord giving notices to the tenant to pay rent. Uh, if the tenant does not pay rent, it involves the landlord bringing in what's called an unlawful detainer action, uh, in order to give the tenant the, uh, the right to contest the eviction. Um, I have looked briefly at the ordinances that, uh, uh, some of the other jurisdictions in King County have passed. I have had some concerns in the past, uh, about the validity of those ordinances, mainly because the Residential Landlord Tenant Act does contain these, these provisions and whether or not the city is preempted from, uh, doing something which the Residential Landlord Tenant Act does not, um, does not provide for. I did spend some time talking today with, um, an attorney, uh, with the King County Bar Association who was responsible for the King County Bar Association proposal. Uh, I do understand the theory, uh, behind it. I have not had a chance to, to take a look and, and see how valid that theory is. Um, but, um, there is certainly an argument under the Landlord Tenant Act that you may have the authority to, uh, institute additional defenses under the act, um, and that, uh, you may have the ability to prevent or to give tenants an additional defense to eviction. So there's, there's some authority for that, uh, position, but again, I've not had a chance to look at it very thoroughly. I would say at this point, my conclusion is that the governor clearly has authority to suspend the provisions of the Landlord Tenant Act because under the governor's emergency powers, um, the governor is given authority to suspend any and all provisions of state law. Um, and, uh, so the governor clearly has that authority. A city's authority is not as clear, um, but I think there is an argument to be made. Um, many, there, there seems to be a split of, um, a split of opinion among many city attorneys that I have discussed this issue with in the past as to whether preemption applies or not. And some jurisdictions have not passed, uh, those eviction, um, type of ordinances for that reason. But again, there are others, like the King County Bar Association attorney, King County's attorney, and the City of Seattle's attorney, who believe that if you phrase it as a defense to a landlord tenant, to an eviction, that that provides you with, uh, some authority to do this under existing case law. So I'm still looking at the issue, but that is where I am at, at this point, and that is what I can tell you.
Jim, is it possible to explain what the downside would be from being in a gray area like this? Could it harm a potential renter? Uh, could it provoke, propose a risk to the city?
Well, I think the potential risk to the city is, uh, that if landlords take you to court in order to, uh, in order to invalidate the regulation, I suppose landlords could also, there are, you know, there are potential claims if in fact you are ordering a landlord to forgive rent because a landlord has a contract which requires the tenant to pay rent. And so there are some issues with that. But many cities have imposed this. There may be safety in numbers of being with other cities, uh, and so far I have not seen any litigation that has been successful in challenging, um, these regulations that cities have imposed. Of course, that may be simply because the governor has imposed a moratorium eviction and that city regulations therefore have not been challenged.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. I'm gonna check in with Councilmember Goodman because what I'd like to do is stay on, um, the legal, the tenant, and the administration buckets of questions. Uh, Councilmember Goodman, is your question for Mr. Haney?
It is.
Oh, great. Thanks. Go ahead.
Um, thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So, um, this, this, this sounds like it's gonna get in the weeds, but I think it's important. So, um, we don't have, um, the means for a landlord in Issaquah to go to court here and evict a tenant, right? They have to go to King County Superior Court?
That is correct.
Okay. So my, um, so you're not, you know, a landlord's not bringing a unlawful detainer action in municipal court before our judge. You have to go to King County Superior Court, um, in Seattle or Kent, or maybe in another jurisdiction. So if the city had, um, and I'm not for or against, I'm just questioning, just so that when we start, if we have this later, it's some, if we, if we're, if the council asks for more information later, we be sure to hit this point. Um, if we had a, um, a law in Issaquah, a code in Issaquah that we adopted, um, then could, could that be used in King County Superior Court? Um, whether it was a, you know, whatever we're talking about in terms of evictions, whether we're, you know, we have our own moratorium or whether we've got some defenses. I'm just, it sound, I'm just curious, cause I'm not sure what the other jurisdictions are that have these defenses, and are they using them in their own courts? That's...
Well, I believe that the defense would have to be used in the King County Superior Court, and the argument would be that, uh, Issaquah is where the relationship between the landlord and tenant exists, and therefore in Issaquah, the landlord-tenant relationship is governed by the Issaquah Municipal Code provision. And therefore it could serve as a defense in King County Superior Court.
Just as Seattle has its own landlord-tenant regulations and you can use those in Superior Court, um, with a case that's, involves landlord and tenants in Seattle.
Yes. And Seattle also, Seattle, I think, was the first, uh, city, my recollection is that it was the first city to pass, um, the moratorium on, on late fees and the defenses. And they phrased it very carefully as a defense because there is, as I say, some legal authority out there. Uh, and for you, Councilmember Goodman, I'll, I'll mention the name of the case. It's Margola Associates versus City of Seattle. Um, there is some authority out there in that case which could indicate that a city has the authority to put up a, a defense.
Okay, okay.
Sorry, I missed that.
The last, I guess I just wanna make one last comment, and that is, um, I haven't done one in quite a while, but I have done some evictions. And, um, uh, it, it is not easy on the part of the landlord. It is, courts don't like to do it. There are advocates in the courthouse that are attorneys that help the tenants. Um, so, uh, personal experience, um, I would highly doubt that there's gonna be, um, judges, commissioners that are super interested in just evicting people in these huge waves. Um, it's, practically speaking, it's gonna be difficult. That is not to say that, um, the ending of the eviction moratorium is not concerning to tenants. That is not what I'm saying. Um, but it simply is not gonna be people getting kicked out on August 2nd or 5th. Um, but it simply is not going to be people getting kicked out on August 2nd or 5th or 10th, um, or 15th. It's just not that easy. Anyway, those, that's just, that's just reality. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. And Council President Hunt has a question for Mr. Haney.
Yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I wondered about the requirement for entering into a payment plan between the landlord and the tenant and then, um, so firstly, I know that that has been imposed for unincorporated King County and, um, if, if, does that fall into the same category of defense like you were talking about earlier?
Well, I'm not aware of any case that deals specifically with imposing a payment plan like that. And I had intended to try to find out who at King County I could talk to in terms of their attorney's office to see if they indeed had, had addressed this issue legally. Uh, and I haven't been able to find the appropriate person yet to talk to, but I'm still attempting to do that. I would think that it falls under the same category. If the city has the ability to regulate the landlord-tenant relationship relating to this, then I would believe that that would be within the city's regulatory authority. The same as, it would, it would be the same as the defense regulatory authority. Again, the, the issue is whether there is a gap in the regulation that allows the city to, to regulate. And the court case I'm aware of, the Margola case that I, that I mentioned to Councilmember Goodman, basically upheld Seattle's, um, regulation that required landlords to register with the city. And it provided a defense to tenants if landlords were not registered. And the Washington Supreme Court upheld that. So there is, there is, at least as I say, some precedent that would say that as a matter of a, setting up a defense, uh, you could, you could do that. And I think if you phrased it correctly, um, you may be able to use the same kind of authority here. Again, not something that has been litigated specifically.
Okay. Um, thank you. And the second part of my question is about conditioning a, if we were to do rental assistance and then conditioning entering into that rental assistance by requiring that the landlords have a payment plan. And that I imagine would be part of a contract and would be, um, doable under contract.
Yeah, and my, uh, some, my understanding is that there is also some discussion of whether it should be the landlords who are accessing the rental assistance program versus the tenants, whether it might be set up where, uh, a landlord could, if a tenant could not make the payment of rent, a landlord could request that that payment be made from the rental assistance program. That's one of the options that some jurisdictions are considering as well, so.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Um, I am not seeing any more questions for Jim, but that doesn't mean he's off the hook. I'm going to move over to our, um, human services manager, Monica Negrilla. There were several questions in there, Monica. I'm not sure which ones you have some information to provide on, but feel free to enlighten us.
Um, thank you, Mayor Polly. Uh, I think one of the questions, uh, was regarding the 1.1 million dollars. Um, and so, um, the answer to that is that, um, the organizations, the rental assistance providers have surveyed, um, 12 apartment complexes and so, uh, the, to date. So the 1.1 million dollars is the amount in overdue rent, um, to date, uh, uh, out of those total 12 apartment complexes. I'm going to pause. Do you remember something or?
Um...
Should I continue?
Oh. I realize that I made a mistake. Um, before we started in with the staff, I believe that I promised the council that they would have a five-minute break. And so Monica, if you're okay to hold for a second, um, for city council members, let's take a five-minute break until 9:38, allow you to take a restroom break, grab a glass of water, whatever you want. We'll be back at 9:38. My apologies.[875.70]
Thank you. Okay, Monica, now you really can start answering the questions.
That's totally fine. So I believe the question, one of the first questions I remember was regarding the 1.1 million dollars. And so I was just clarifying that the number is currently overdue rent, however, it is from the 12 apartment complexes that were surveyed in the last couple of weeks. And the rental assistance providers will continue to survey additional apartment complexes. So that's just a sample for now. Another question, I think, was regarding the possible collaborative for housing stability, whether that includes also landlords. And actually, this is, and how do you bring so many landlords together, right? This was actually a topic that we brainstormed recently with our rental assistance providers, especially with, there are so many additional layers of complexity, because sometimes you have property managers that are very different than than the actual landlords and owners. And then who would be the perfect person to be at the table? And then how many, sometimes like even with the food collaborative, we have seven, eight providers, and the groups can get larger, and therefore working groups are more difficult to make progress. One of the first things that we offered was that perhaps we can limit initially the collaborative to maybe the low income and affordable housing providers, because it would be a smaller group. And then as we learn more, then we can perhaps, depending on the meeting, invite other guests from outside. So that is one option. However, definitely, we are open for other options and looking at the pros and cons for.
Monica, if I'm hearing you correctly, the parties that would likely do a convening would be those that you work with. And Issaqua wouldn't be the convener necessarily, but Issaqua would participate in anything that the organization put together.
Right.
If we have the capacity to do it. Okay, thank you. Were there other questions that you heard in there or comments on the council questions?
I think that's it on my end. However, if I missed something, would love to answer.
Great. Well, let, I'm going to check in with Council President Hunt. Is your question for Monica, Council President Hunt?
It is.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Yes, this is Council President Hunt. On the 1.1 million, again, a further clarification, is that only on low income, or, for example, 80% AMI, or is that all income levels that's included in that 1.1 million rents, behead rent?
That's all income levels, and it's from that list that is in your attachment packet. So it provides both, low income, affordable, and just regular.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I'm going to move to City Administrator Bob Kowits. There are elements and aspects of the questions that were asked that had to do with resourcing and city resources. And I wondered if you could take a few moments to comment on that.
Sure, Madam Mayor, members of the council, thank you. In my notes, I kind of have a couple of different buckets. There's the issue regarding legislation, having the council pass ordinances that would protect tenants from eviction, put in place issues regarding payment plans, things like that. If that's something the council wishes to pursue, I think we can do that. Mr. Haney has indicated he is already in touch with other jurisdictions in King County that have done this. I certainly would not recommend we reinvent the wheel. If there is going to be legal action taken against local governments doing this, I would much rather we all hang together with these ordinances. So I think we can do that. Obviously, there's a time consideration. It's the 20th of July today. You do not have another regular meeting scheduled during the month of July. So if that's something that the council wishes to move forward with, I would hope that there would be motion soon to that effect. As far as resources go for drafting, I'm not concerned. I am concerned about any kind of litigation moving forward, if we would be called to court to help defend individual tenants using our law. I don't want to get bogged down with costs, because quite honestly, I don't know what they would be. Suffice it to say, it's likely there would be some, and we'll leave it at that. The second issue is additional funding for rental assistance. The council has already allocated $100,000. As you know, that $100,000 was done early during the pandemic and is not eligible for reimbursement through CARES Act dollars. The city continues to face a $2.5 to $3 million budget deficit in the current year, which we have not made up, with 23 layoffs and other cuts accounting to almost $7.5 million. So any money that we would spend would likely have to come from the general fund, and would be sustainable if we did another $100,000 probably six weeks. And so in six weeks or eight weeks' time, we would be back looking at dollars. As Mr. Negrella said, you know, the actual need is more like over $1 million. It's a small piece of the problem, but it's a big piece of our financial issues. And so at this point, I don't think the administration can be supportive of additional direct cash payments. And then finally, what other staff resources can we do to coordinate, facilitate, convene? Ms. Negrella, who you've seen nearly weekly since March, dealing with all aspects of human needs in our community, is really the sole staff member that we have doing this. We had a conversation today to begin pivoting to another council priority, and that is, what do we do with the police department? And how do we make the police department's staffing and resources on the human services side be more appropriate as we move forward with the 2020 budget that will be before you on September 29? So we're just tight for resources. I have instructed Mr. Negrella to go find at least another body to help her on at least a part-time basis, get through the end of the year as we deal with police issues, as we deal with food and shelter issues, as we deal with the human services commission, as we deal with community equity issues. This is not what she signed up for, and we need to be mindful of that resource. So we would be very stretched to do any additional aggressive convenings with landlords and tenants on this. So, Madam Mayor, members of the council, my recommendation is, let's go forward, if you'd like, with law. Let's go forward with drafting of ordinances. We'll need to decide when you'll come together to do that. As far as additional cash resources, the federal government may come through. We'll know, I would imagine, in the next month if the federal government provides additional resources. And I think at that time, if the council wants to revisit what dollar amount that is, what strings may be attached, I think that'd be very appropriate. And the need will absolutely still be there a month from now, as it is today. So I think, Madam Mayor, unless there's other questions from the council comments, maybe it's worth, if there are motions dealing with specific ordinances, to direct Mr. Haney to draft those ordinances.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. I am not seeing questions right now, but I am seeing comments, so it doesn't preclude further questions. But if we're ready to move into some comments and discussions, let's do that. Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. City Administrator Bob Kowits talks about sustainability, and I completely understand. But I sort of wonder if this is one of those times that it's not about sustainability. This is a, it has been 75 years, perhaps, since the United States has faced the challenge that we are facing at this moment. I think many of us believe, there was new information out today from the Institute for Disease Modeling that basically says you can send kids back to school this fall, or you can keep the current social distancing, but you can't do both. So we either have to go back to stage one, and all our businesses have to suffer, or we have to stay, or we have to keep our kids home. And we all have a tough time working and providing for our kids. And so at this time, I think it's worth considering. We continue to maintain an ending fund balance in excess of our financial policy. It's Mr. Bob Kowits' job to keep us from spending that money unreasonably, and he does a good job at it. But I think it's worth considering. What would it do for our community if we spent $2 million or $3 million out of that ending fund balance? Maybe it wouldn't do much, and so maybe it's not worth considering. But the historical nature of the times in which we find ourselves, and the fact that we continue to maintain this extremely large ending fund balance, that is our citizens' money. And it may well be that this is a time, if ever there was a rainy day, this is that rainy day. So I'm not ready to say that I want to spend $2 million or $3 million on any one particular thing, but I would like to know what that would do, and what that would do in the community. And I know it gives City Administrator Bob Kowits kittens to contemplate doing this, because it isn't what you historically do. But these are not historical times. These are unhistorical times. And I believe that we have a long, difficult period ahead of us. And if there's something that we can do as a community for the hardest-to-be-set members of our community, it's worth at least considering doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martz. I'm not seeing anybody else signed up to comment at this moment. Any hands raised? Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I guess I first have a question, which is about some of the comments that were made earlier about the timing. And if the eviction moratorium were to expire on August 1st, then evictions could begin to proceed. And yes, there's a 14-day notice and some other timing there, but they could begin to proceed then. And I believe that shortly thereafter or thereafter, the eviction also goes on to somebody's record that it's been filed. Is that correct, or what's the timing around that?
Is that something you can answer, Mr. Haney, or is that something you need to provide some information later on?
Well, certainly, Councilmember Hunt is correct that if the moratorium on evictions that the governor has imposed expires August 1, a landlord could initiate an eviction at that point. So that eviction could move forward. As Councilmember Goodman says, that is an involved process that, you know, does take some time, but that eviction could, you notice, could go out to the tenant to tell them that they needed to pay rent, assuming that they were delinquent in rent at that point.
Okay. So I do think that, so thank you for that explanation. And I do think that timing is important here, because I would like to see, put something, if we are going to take action, I would like to see us take action before the moratorium is set to expire. Again, I have to think, it must be so stressful for people to not know if that's going to expire on August 1st. It's stressful for me, and I'm not renting. But I just think we should try to do what we can to give people some certainty about taking action before then. So in light of that, and in light of that, I think we heard this evening that we could consider an action in terms of law, I would like to propose that we, so I would like to move that we continue this topic at a special meeting on July 27 at 7:00 p.m. to just consider actions to support housing stability.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion? City Administrator Bob Kowits has a question.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council President Hunt, could you be more specific as to what you're expecting to see on the agenda in your motion?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt, and I was just going to speak to that. So we have discussed a number of items this evening, and the ones that I think we, I don't expect that we will have as much information as we need to consider rental assistance, although I would like, if we can consider rental assistance, I would like to have more information there. But then, really, I'm interested also in the defense of, to eviction, so the payment plan requirements that was mentioned earlier, and as well as the other item that we discussed this evening, which was around the convening and options for convening of landlords and tenants.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, may I follow up?
Yep.
I want to be very clear. So could you, I'm most concerned about the ordinances, Council President. So the one regarding a payment plan, one was regarding a defense, so that the city would defend tenants, and then a master ordinance that would prohibit the evictions, I would imagine.
My intent is that, so I had asked a question earlier, and my understanding was that the payment plan issue was tied into a defense of eviction, and that was based on the case law, potentially based on the case law that Mr. Haney spoke to earlier. So that was what I was referring to. And then I also am interested in hearing what other council members would like to discuss, because right now, we have, I think, an opportunity. But, you know, like I said, I think the deadline for this eviction moratorium is approaching, and we don't know if it will be extended again.
Is that clear, City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Unfortunately, Madam Mayor, it's not. And I guess I'd look to Mr. Haney, because you're asking us, if we move, if the motion is successful, we will need to have ordinances prepared. And I just want to make sure that those ordinances reflect the council's wishes. Mr. Haney, can you, do you understand what's being asked of you, and can you state that so that the motion is clear?
Well, I just want to clarify myself. My understanding is that what Councilmember, Council President Hunt, is proposing is not that the city would defend an individual tenant if, from an eviction, but that the city would provide that the tenant would have a defense against an eviction for, if the landlord was evicting them due to non-payment because of COVID, and/or if they had not entered into a payment plan. But I don't understand that the city would be spending resources to actually defend the tenant, unless Council President Hunt is saying something that I'm not aware of, so.
Thank you, Mr. Haney. That was correct. That was what I was referring to.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
I'm sorry. I just want to make sure everybody's on the same page. So, Mr. Haney, then, is this all one ordinance? Is it one ordinance that declares a moratorium on evictions, and then a follow-up ordinance with this additional information? How would this be drafted?
Well, I would certainly anticipate that it would be one ordinance.
Okay.
I'm, I would want to ask the council then, are we looking at a moratorium on evictions, or are we looking at providing a defense? That's what I understood. The question was not necessarily saying a landlord cannot evict, but saying that a landlord cannot, that a tenant has a defense to eviction if the tenant has been unable to pay rent due to COVID. If a tenant has been unable to pay rent or unwilling to pay rent for some other reason, there would not be a defense. That's my understanding of how the Seattle ordinance works.
And Council President, is that your, that your understanding of what you're requesting?
Yes, this is Council President Hunt, and yes, and I do not believe I spoke to at all our own moratorium on eviction. So that was not the intent. But what Mr. Haney just said was my intent.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. So I see a process question from Deputy Council President Ray.
Yeah, this is really a question, I'm sorry, this is Chris Ray. This is a question for the city clerk. Can we do a continuation of an informational item? I've never seen that before. Not that I've seen everything, I'm just curious.
This is Deputy City Clerk Tisha. And yes, the council can make a motion to broad effect at their regular meetings. And so this is a proper motion before the council.
Okay, thank you.
So, Council President Hunt, the motion maker, had an opportunity to explain the rationale and clarify it. First, City Administrator, I'm going to go to the second Council President, sorry, Councilmember Martz. Did you want to make comments? And then it would be great if we could go around the wheel, talk to, hear what everybody's thinking.
No, I mean, obviously, anything having to do with rental assistance is downstream. I was more, my comment before was more in response to the question of sustainability as it relates to the options in front of us. But obviously, we should explore the regulatory options before we explore any financial aid. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, looking for comments from any of the other council members. Let's see, Councilmember Goodman, followed by Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So just to clarify, we would be, it would be coming back, and it would just be potential regulatory issues.
That is a question for the motion maker, or are you asking whether or not there are additional motions that may feed into some sort of work product at a special meeting? Is that the question?
No, I'm just clarifying that so far, the motion on the table only has to do with bringing information to next week's meeting that would be about ordinances regarding regulations, in particular, a defense, but not a financial piece for rental assistance is not part of this motion. Thanks.
Clarification, just through Council President, the motion, as Tisha put it in the comment box, is continue this topic at a special virtual meeting on July 27 at 7:00 p.m. to consider actions to support housing stability. I think the question is, are the actions just a consideration of the proposed ordinance?
Question for me?
Yep.
Okay, this is Council President Hunt, and I believe the action would be, yes, the regulatory ordinance, and not the financial piece. But I do expect that we would have the opportunity with the agenda bill to review again the financial piece and the financial need. But again, the action, I think, is the regulatory action that Mr. Haney spoke to earlier that we would be considering. And then also, just to clarify, this is a motion to have that discussion, but you're not, obviously, nobody is voting on that tonight. We don't even have that before us. Thanks.
Councilmember Goodman, does it answer your question? I see a head nod. Let's see, moving down the list, I believe it's Councilmember Hall next.
Mayor Pauli, this is Zach Hall. Feel free to take Councilmember Martz's question first, since it's a long one.
Great, thanks. Councilmember Martz, question?
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. I just, as the second on the motion, I just wanted to concur with the maker of the motion, that I didn't, I was trying to explain it more clearly earlier, but though I've made my comments about what might or may not be good about financial assistance, I support the narrow definition of what the meeting is for next week.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Martz. Back to, well, actually, City Administrator Bob Kowits has a question. City Administrator Bob Kowits?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Council President Hunt, you mentioned then financial issues again. And so I'm still unclear what additional information you would like.
This is Council President Hunt. I, you can disregard. I mentioned it in the context of, that we are provided with other information in agenda bills, but you can disregard. It's not the action that we would be taking.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. Let's see, I believe it's Councilmember DeMichele, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Yes, I just wanted to, sorry, this is Councilmember DeMichele. I just wanted to say that I really appreciated Councilmember Martz's comments, and I do think that's a discussion that we should have. I just think that it's a very broad question, and one that requires some thinking and research, possible research, because the question that I heard Councilmember Martz ask is, if we were to move significant funds out of the reserves, what do we get for it? And I think that is a question that is going to take more than a week to come up with a viable answer. So I am interested in the question, and I am interested in the answer. But I think at this meeting, a week from now, that we should focus in narrowly on the question that Council President Hunt is recommending. So that's just my comment.
Thank you. I have a question for City Administrator Bob Kowits about process and August and September. There seems to be a couple of information requests here. One is if funding for rental assistance is to be impactful, what number would that be? And we are currently entering into a budget season where an additional 3-point-something million dollars in cuts will have to be made. And it seems like these two conversations are really married, because it's not just about how impactful the money is, it's what else do you cut out of your city services? Or how far down do you draw your ending fund balance? And so does it, and from a process point of view, are these two questions married and part of the same conversation?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, that can be. And let's be clear on fiscal years, that we're talking in the current fiscal year, we may have a $2.5 to $3 million deficit. We have not discussed what deficits would be next year, in '21. And so, just to be clear on that, you know, that's a very large question about how we could be impactful. I think there's a lot of different ways to look at that. And Madam Mayor, I guess I would hope that there be an additional motion in that, because that's going to take a significant amount of staff work to answer that question, which we're happy to do. But I think it is significant enough that just a mention at a council meeting is not enough. I think that there would need to be a direction from the legislative body, because we may have to bring in outside resources. Again, Ms. Negrella is completely stretched at this point. It's a large question. We may need to have to retain an outside person just to answer that particular question. So if that's something the council would like to see in coming weeks, I would appreciate a motion.
Okay, thank you. That's very helpful. Now going to comment to Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. You sort of covered what I was going to say, and that is that we are precipitously close to our budget presentation and starting our budget deliberations, and that, you know, all of that should be married. And, you know, we're talking about this year, but soon, we're talking about next year. And if we thought last year's budget season was super awesome fun, wait till this year. So I am very concerned about considering, in particular, a large amount of money before we have all of the information and all the facts before us about the proposed budget. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thanks, Mayor Pauli. Councilmember Hall here. I guess first, I'll just say, yeah, this question of how much would be impactful is very clearly a policy question. Some of us might think helping one family would be impactful, too, so it's clearly a policy question. My comment, and actually, I might want to save this for this future meeting then. So maybe this might be a question for then. I have comments and suggestions on how the policy should be written for providing this legal defense on eviction. Is this something I should save for a special meeting, or would this be helpful if you're practicing?
I believe what would be most helpful for Mr. Haney is for you to ask your questions now, so that he can consider it during the drafting of the proposed ordinance.
Okay, yeah, not necessarily a question, but just to say that, I guess, when he's doing his research and is digging into what Seattle and King County are doing, they very specifically call out under what circumstances tenants cannot be evicted. And it's a broad net that I like, from a policy perspective, that I would like to be included, that include things like loss of income because of loss of job, but also caretaking for a family member who has COVID-19. Sorry.
And Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hall, I think, as we've said, we are not looking to reinvent the wheel here, that Mr. Haney is going to go to the City of Seattle ordinance, to the King County ordinance. And my sense would be to, the ordinance you will see in a week's time will be, if not completely identical, nearly identical to that, for many reasons. One, because of the comprehensive nature of the ordinances as they exist. And also, if we are all sued, let's all be sued together over the same language. If we have slightly different language, we'll be sued separately from Seattle and King County and any other jurisdiction that might in the next seven days want to do the same things we're talking about. So I would suspect you'll see something nearly identical to the Seattle ordinance.
Thank you. I want to give an opportunity to, we haven't heard from all council members. Are there any other council members that would like to make a comment or have remaining questions before we call for the vote? questions before we call for the vote? Looking in the chat. Not seeing anybody. I'm going to move up to the motion. The motion on the table is continue this topic at a special virtual meeting on July 27th at 7:00 PM to consider actions to support housing stability. Tisha, have I got the right motion?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor say aye.
Oh, excuse me. We'll take a roll call vote.
Roll call vote. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, Councilmember De Michelle?
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman?
Aye.
Councilmember Hall?
Aye.
Council President Hunt?
Aye.
Councilmember Mart?
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh?
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you, City Clerk. Uh, there was discussion, and I just want to make sure there wasn't additional action. Do any of the council members, oh, Councilmember Mart says a motion.
Yes, so I'm, I'm freewheeling this, so if I get it wrong, then we'll figure out how to say it better, but I would like the administration to come back in the first meeting in August with what a potential rental subsidy package would look like for a potential small, medium, large investment by this council.
Is there a second? If you could indicate in the chat box? Seconded by, oh, sorry, Council President Hunt. Would you like to? This is Council President Hunt, thank you.
Aye, second.
Great. Uh, City Administrator Bob Kowits, you have a question? If you're talking, you're on mute.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, I had a question on the, separate from the motion, but now that there's the motion, that's two weeks from now, two weeks from tonight, so that gives us roughly, we can have to, to sort through this. We want to be helpful, we want to be supportive, we, we are in kind of uncharted territory here, it's going to be very difficult to do that. If the motion passes, we'll figure it out, but I just want to say, given everything else that is on our plate, all the other challenges we are trying to sort through here, we have very limited staff resources in this area, and it will be difficult, it would be difficult even to find additional resources to bring in and give them, you know, five or six days to work on this. So I mentioned that, if the motion passes, we'll figure it out and we'll be with, with you on August 3rd.
Uh, Councilmember Mart, would you like to speak to the motion?
I would. Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. I, I think, I think this can be done relatively lightly. Uh, one of the things we heard tonight was a 1.1 million dollar number, but that was everybody, right? That included market rate, uh, the mayor is shaking her head, no, that that did not include market rate. I thought I heard-
Monica, sorry, Councilmember Mart. Monica, did you, in your report, talk about how many of the rental units within Issaquah was contained in the information? Was it 100% of the rental unit?
No, not 100%. Uh, it was a total of 12 apartment complexes, so it was just a sample.
Um, Councilmember Mart, you are still on the floor.
Okay, but I, what I thought Monica said was, there was a question about whether that was folks at 50% AMI or 80% AMI, and I thought Monica said that that included people all the way up through whatever. It was not, it was not parsed out by, by AMI.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. I'm going to let Monica expand on that, because I, I think we've heard different, I think we all heard what she said differently. So Monica, let's take a second stab at it.
So from those 12 apartment complexes that were surveyed to date, there are market rates, rate apartment complexes, as well as low-income and affordable housing providers. However, the caveat is that mainly if you take a look at the attachment, those that are at market rate, they're about one or two, or maximum 4% of the units are, have overdue rent, whereas those that are the low-income and affordable housing providers are at 50 or 60%. So overall, the majority of those apartment complexes are low-income.
Monica, I think the question too is about, is this a sampling, or is this representative of our housing inventory?
It's just a sampling, and it is just 12 apartment complexes that the rental assistance providers work with, and they had a chance to survey up to this point.
So there, the storyline that's coming out of there is that you have a far higher percentage of folks in subsidized housing that are struggling to a much more significant degree than in market-rate housing, but we don't have the full market-rate picture.
Exactly.
The full picture, I guess, the full picture. Okay. Councilmember Mart, we'll come back to you. Does that answer your question?
Well, I was, I was going to speak to my motion and answer, um, City Administrator. So my point was that I think that this could be fairly light. I don't, I don't think I'm saying that what we would have to have at the beginning of August would be all the i's dotted and t's crossed, but I want to understand if we can move the needle or not, and I'm not willing to wait until November, because that's four months away. We won't have a new budget for four months. I think four months will represent a, a sizable fraction of the time that it's going to take until, you know, if, if we're going to see, if things are going to start to improve in the new year with hopefully a vaccine and all those sorts of things, yep, the, the window of crisis is coming up. It's not, it's not four months from now. So I'd like to understand that, and that's why I think that the administration can get the broad outlines of what that kind of money would or would not mean. If it's, if it's a drop in the bucket, let's understand that and move on, but if it really would impact things, then let's, at that first meeting, decide we want to delve into it further. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Mart. And I think, you know, if it's, if it's broad, broad strokes, it may be unsatisfying, but it may be all that can be done in two weeks, since there are other, you know, larger organizations that are working on this. I just don't know that the data's available, because it hasn't shown up anywhere. Going to a question from Councilmember Ray.
There's, there's, hi, this is Chris Ray. There's actually two, two questions in my question. One of them is, do we know how many rental units there are in the City of Issaquah? I'm going to guess there's more than 1,300 by a significant margin.
Um, I'm not sure we have anybody this evening that would be able to address that.
Yeah, so, um, though it was a great sampling, it was a small sample, and particularly if we're going to try and extrapolate from that, so I just would like to, to know that. And then, do we know if we captured in that sampling all of our affordable housing locations? Because it, you know, that may be helpful too, to understand the mag, I'm trying to get to Councilmember Mart's question, which is, what's the magnitude of this problem? And, and, and can we do something? And, and because we're working from a sample, and I don't know how big the sample is, I can't get there. So, um, Monica, any, any insights there to share?
Um, thank you, Councilmember Ray. Um, so yes, I think that's what we are trying to attempt to do, to get an idea of how big the problem is. However, this is what the rental assistance providers were able to obtain in the last couple of weeks, just surveying the landlords. It takes time, and so, yes, that's exactly our intent, to get to a better picture and more realistic picture of what does rental assistance needs to look like in Issaquah. I, it might take more time, and I don't know if I can promise you that I'm going to have the full picture in the next couple of weeks. Like you said, they're just like, we don't even know how many rental apartments are. However, we can definitely, that's the list. We started with the low-income and affordable housing units, for sure.
And, thank you, Monica. Councilmember Goodman?
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman here. So my comments about the budget weren't meant to put off a question about rental assistance to the time when we vote on the ultimate budget for 2021, which typically is November or has been in the past at some times, early December. My, my point was exactly what Administrator Bob Kowits had talked about, in that we've really got a limited amount of resources here, and at the same time, we're trying to finalize a budget, and in early September, that proposed budget comes out, and at that point, the mayor has to have recommendations, and we will know what the administration's report is on the impact for next year. So this is not a four-month waiting period. I'm concerned that we would have not all of the information to make an informed decision, and it's, and it's not, if we did something early August, my concern, we would have, we also have a city that we have to make sure that we're financing properly, and, and I, I don't know that we're going to have all that information. That's really what my concern. It was not about, let's wait all the way till the end of, till the end of November, November. But I'm concerned about making decisions piecemeal, rather than making them in an informed manner, and the part about big chunks of rental assistance, before we have all the information to us about the budget for next year, that's really where my concern is. And so that's why I think it's just a few weeks too soon to consider something large, and because of our resources in staffing, I'm not sure that we'll have the information that we need. Anyway, that's just where my concern was. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Councilmember Walsh? Um, actually, before you go, Councilmember Walsh, I think, uh, City Administrator Bob Kowits has got some approximate rental numbers that he'd like to share.
So according to the U.S. Census, their latest data, which is 2018, there are 16,013 housing units in Issaquah. 41% of those are rental, and so that works out to 6,565 units. So that's all, that's all incomes, all, all, all costs, but it's a, it's a gross number. So it's 6,565, according to the U.S. Census Bureau, is how many rental units there are in Issaquah.
Thank you for looking that up. I'm going to now go to Councilmember Walsh.
Thank you. This is Councilmember Walsh. I, I was going to say something similar to Councilmember Goodman about the timing of our budget and wanting to hear the administration's proposal, at the very least, before looking at a, an output of cash, understanding that the administration's proposal may rely on having some of that cash available, and so I, I think the, the timing of these two things need to be linked if we're looking at using a sense of cash, and also that just, this is coming up for us tonight, but this rental crisis hasn't been something that just happened now. It hasn't been something that just happened two weeks ago. It's been happening, and so the, the idea that we have to manage this in the, have a response in the first week of August, when we also have a responsibility to a budget in a short period of time, I, I think is causing me a little bit of consternation there.
Thank you, Councilmember Walsh. I'm looking in the chat to see if any other council members either have a question or a comment before we call for the vote. Comment from Council President Hunt?
Um, yes, thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I will be supporting, and I wanted to explain why. I think that the timing is important, and I think what we're, my understanding of the intent here is that we want to understand the extensive need, we want more information on that, and Council, Councilmember Walsh is correct, that this has been a looming crisis for a while, and I think, in my mind, this timing, I think, would be good to have that conversation before we have the proposed budget, so that council can consider more where we all are with more information to have that discussion. So I will be supporting the motion, and I, and I, I understand the timing is a challenge, but I think it's important that we have the discussion sooner.
Councilmember Ray?
Hi, this is Chris Ray. This is a question for Administrator Bob Kowits. Um, so what aren't you going to do if you do this? I mean, I appreciate your heroics and your get-it-done attitude, but, so what isn't going to get done if you spend the next two weeks putting this together? I'm just trying to understand, from an opportunity cost perspective, what, what this is going to cost me.
Uh, Councilmember, W, Council President Ray, members of the council, Ms. Negrilla is a busy person, and we spoke today about how to move forward with the city council's potential action plan on police accountability, equity, and human services. And so our charge is how do we evaluate the police department's budget as far as human services are concerned, and have a proposal in the proposed budget at the end of September? And so, absent this work assignment, that is what we were going to begin to work on, which means that we will put aside the work on the police department budget until August 4th. And, and, and Madam Mayor, maybe, you know, I, as, as your city administrator, I always am hesitant to try to weigh competing resource requests, because I'm damned if I do and I'm damned if I don't. Um, you know, if, if there's a desire on the council's part to invest additional dollars in rental assistance, we can come up with some ideas to do that. Uh, I think that this larger overarching desire to come up with something that's meaningful, given the context of the world we live in, is just really hard, because I, we're not going to be able to tell you on August 3rd how long it's going to be needed, we're not going to be able to know so many other factors, but if the council truly wants to make an investment in the community, I mean, any dollar is going to make a difference. I think it was Councilmember Hall who said, you know, how do you measure this? One family helped is a measurable result, and I, I would agree with that. So if you want us to come back on August 3rd, we'll come back with our best estimates. It may not be this look in the crystal ball and say, this is what the next 12 months look like, and here, you know, here's a gradation of small, medium, and large. It may not be that fine, but at least it will be something for you to side on, because I, my sense of the council is you want to do that. My challenge is, we got to pay other bills too, and we have to serve other critical community needs as well. There's just so many in front of us, and we can't carry all the water. The state of Washington needs to step up and start carrying some more water. The federal government needs to step up and carry some more water. You know, we're going to have done more for rental assistance in Issaquah than the United States government has done. You know, drink that in for a moment. And so, so that, so that's, that's the challenge. So we'll come back with something if, if the will of the council on August 3rd. I just can't guarantee that it's going to be as insightful or as meaningful as perhaps you all might hope it is.
Thank you, City Administrator Bob Kowits. I, I just have to add on to what you're saying, and then we're going to come back. We have more questions and comments. Um, as the head of the administration, I don't support this at all, so we'll get through the rest of the reasoning, but this is just really unfortunate that we're doing this tonight, and we're doing it on camera, and that we're doing it in a really narrow focus when I look at the numbers and I look at what's coming ahead and the amount of uncertainty, and I just, we just don't even have the bandwidth to do it. So it's not a simple thing. We have staff that have totally switched their jobs this year and are doing brand-new things and doing amazing work, but I don't know how we can do this and satisfy. I think we can do it and disappoint, and like Paulie said, he'll give you what, you know, he'll give you what you want, but the administration's recommendation is not to proceed with this at that time. Uh, Councilmember Ray had a question, but I recut it. Councilmember Mart says a comment, followed by Councilmember Goodman. Oh.
Madam Mayor, this is Councilmember Mart. I came in this evening just wanting to know if it was possible to move the needle with rental assistance. Your administration said you wanted it phrased in the form of a motion, so I gave it in the form of a motion. I'm, I think that you're being against a motion that doesn't, that the terms of which don't exist yet is unfortunate, and perhaps unprecedented in my 11 years on the council? Look, I get that the administration doesn't want to do this, but I want to know if we can move the needle or not. Maybe we can. That's fine, but, and it, I wasn't even particularly in love with August 3rd, but you said you wanted it in the form of a motion, so you got it in the form of a motion. But really, your comments opposing a motion that doesn't exist yet are very unfortunate.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Mart, that's the way it's coming across. The motion has been formed, and it provides an opportunity for the council to have a discussion on camera, which I think is- which I think is a great idea. I think what you're hearing is that we just can't do it well. If this is an assessment that's needed, I would suggest we give it the amount of time we need. With our current staffing and with the work that's going on out in the community and out in the region, the numbers don't exist. So so you can get something in two weeks, but you probably can't get what you're asking for.
I'm sorry, but I'm sure Arch knows exactly how many units at 30% and 50% and 80% are in the city. That's why we're a member of Arch. Right? I'm I'm through.
Going to comments, Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am concerned about, like I said before, concerned about the timing. And I think to Councilmember Walsh's point about this is not something that just happened right away, I looked at it a little differently in that this is a long-term problem. And we're going to have, there are going to be so many opportunities to help. This is going to go on for a long time. And to counsel to, sorry, Councilmember, to Administrator Bob Kowitz's point, you know, others have to carry the water. I think that we should focus our efforts on shaking loose some money in other places from King County and getting some some advocacy going for the feds and for the state. And we should focus now on our budget and try to get that out so that we can have a more thoughtful and thorough deliberation about the budget once we know exactly what that looks like. It's a to me, it's an issue of timing. And the reality regarding our resources and what we can put to this, it's not about a willingness or an interest in helping. It's just that we have so many other balls in the air right now. We're going to have, this question is going to be around for a long time. This is not our only opportunity. So those are the reasons I'm not supporting. It's not about helping. It's about timing, and I don't think it's the right timing right now. I think if we wait a few weeks, we'll have a lot more information. And then I think we make a better decision for the community, for the city. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray.
Thank you. This is Chris Ray. We have limited capacity, and I think we all know that. And if we ask people to do more, that means we're going to get a less satisfactory response in terms of what a potential rental subsidy program could look like. But it also will have a spillover effect, and it will have an impact on our discussions we're having around policing and, you know, redefining what the role of police is. And from where I sit, I think this is an important discussion to have. But the one that the people in this city have talked to us about a lot of late is what are you guys going to do around leasing and what's going to happen? How are you reimagining policing? And I don't want to short shrift that conversation. And I know we will, because I know Monica will will deliver and she'll, you know, bust her her hump and she'll try and get it done. And and everything will both will turn out in a position where we will be less satisfied. And I'd rather just take on one thing and get it right. And we can come back to this at a future date because I don't think it's I don't think it's going away. So, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. I am looking in the comment section to see if anybody else or the chat section to see if anybody else would like to comment before calling for the vote. I'll give it a few seconds. Okay, not seeing anyone further. It has been moved and seconded to direct the administration at the first meeting in August to provide what a potential rental subsidy package would look like for a potential small, medium, large investment by the city council. All those, whoops, going to a roll call vote again, handing it back over to the city clerk. Councilmember De Michelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Nay.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Nay.
Councilmember Walsh.
Nay.
Four ayes, three nays, the motion carries. Thank you, city clerk. Is there any other questions or clarifications that Administrator Bob Kowitz needs before we proceed to the next item?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So if Governor Inslee issues a proclamation next Monday at 5:00 P.M. saying that the moratorium has been extended, do we still need to meet?
Great question. Thoughts and comments from the council? Give you time to digest it first. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. First, the clarification, this is regarding the specifically regarding the July 27th special meeting. Is that right?
Yes, I'm sorry. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you. My opinion would be that we should still meet because this will be to consider primarily to be considering this defense. And at some point, the moratorium will expire. And I would like to have this conversation. But I'm open to feedback from others. It definitely, you know, it's definitely uncertain about the moratorium. But one thing that is certain is it will eventually end.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. Anybody else wanting to comment? Deputy Council President Ray.
Councilmember Hall beat me in.
Oh, I missed that. Councilmember Hall, followed by Deputy Council President Ray.
I pressed enter a fraction of a second earlier. Thanks, Mr. Polly, Councilmember Zach Hall. I guess I personally think that if the governor were to extend his moratorium, it would be fine to, in my opinion, to move our conversation. But I agree with Council President Hunt. It needs to happen in the very near future because you can't. I don't see it as a sustainable action to just keep extending the statewide moratorium. So I would be comfortable with moving it later next month if that happens.
Thank you. Deputy Council President Ray.
I I think we unanimously agreed to have this meeting. I think we need to have it. And if the governor gives us some new data, maybe it'll be a briefer meeting. But we just agreed that we're going to do it. So let's go ahead and do it.
Thank you. Looking in the chat box to see if anybody else wants to comment, city administrator, but I'm not seeing any. Any other questions from the city administrator or are we moving on?
Moving on. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. So the next item on the agenda this evening is a consent calendar. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance. If authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
This is Chris Ray. They have.
This is Councilmember Walsh. They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Seeing a comment from Councilmember Goodman, and I just want to check in with the city clerk. Would this be appropriate time for a comment from a council member? I don't believe the motion has been made yet. So yes, unless unless this comment is related to the motion. Okay, that's great. I'm not sure that the comment is related to the motion or not. So I will give Councilmember Goodman a chance to enlighten us.
I was only going to alert you that I had a comment after the motion is seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Just so I have don't have to put my microphone on and go, wait, wait, wait.
Okay, great. Thank you. First, I'm going to go to Council President Hunt to see if any email comments are to be shared on the consent calendar item.
Thank you. Yes, we did receive some comments on the consent calendar from one resident. Firstly, on the roll call, which was AB 8007, amending Section 4.23 of the Council Rules of Procedure to allow for alternating roll call. This resident felt that, especially with less public visibility, the resident would like a set roll call. And I believe that was the extent of the consent calendar comment.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. It also looks like you want to make a motion.
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Council President Hunt. I would move to adopt the consent calendar as it appears in tonight's printed agenda.
Is there a second?
This is Chris Ray. I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any comments? Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So as was just mentioned, one of the items on the consent agenda is Agenda Bill 8007, amending Section 4.3, 4.23 of the Council Rules of Procedure to allow for alternating roll call votes. And since the general topic of that agenda bill is virtual meetings, I wanted to make a comment about that in that I was thinking that it might be time for the council to discuss the virtual meeting format. And I'm not talking about tonight. But we we've had a request in last week to change up our format to allow what we used to allow in our in-person meetings for study sessions, which is public comment after each agenda item. And I've personally had four community members ask me about that. So not necessarily specific to that. But because the topic of the agenda bill item is virtual meetings, and we first started having a virtual meetings in March, so we're four months into this. We had, we've never had a council discussion about them. And I haven't heard anything about any end in sight. So I would say that we're in a semi-permanent state of virtual meetings here. So what I'm my ask would be is that we have virtual meetings as a topic as soon as we can on a at a study session so we can talk publicly about the format and understand what it is that we can and can't do technically, what it is that's working well and not working so well, what it is we might be able to change or improve. I just think it's a it's time that we have a conversation about it at the council level in public just so that we can all check in. And 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 yes, one of the topics would be whether we can have virtually whether we can have have public comment after each agenda item. But anyway, I'm interested in what other council members think and if the administration thinks that we could do that at a study session pretty soon. So that's what I wanted to comment about.
Thank you. Are you asking your fellow council members to provide some comments tonight and asking the city administrator to propose a potential date tonight?
If there are comments or if, I guess specifically for meeting efficiency, if there are objections to having that as a topic as a study session, then perhaps those would be those objections would be important to note. If there are not, then I would be interested in what the administration thinks we could do in terms of timing about bringing this to a study session. That's those are my simple thoughts.
So I am keeping my eye on the chat box to see if any council members want to weigh in with comments or objections. And we'll start with Deputy Council President Ray.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Chris Ray. I think it's time to do that, too. I think Councilmember Goodman is correct. We are, we are in this for the long haul. And I think there's an opportunity to not just look at during the COVID crisis, how do we, yes, but is this, what are we going to do going forward? We've learned a lot, some of it painful. But how do we move forward? And and what do we need to do with the rules of procedure? I think that changing the roll call was such a a net change to make. But I think there are other changes we should probably be considering at this point, too. So I would definitely think that would be a good use of our time.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Councilmember De Michelle.
Yeah, I I hesitated to do this, but I will do it now. I did want to thank my fellow council members for the thoughtfulness since mine starts with D. And I'm always first. So I do appreciate that there was some thought about rotating the the order in which we vote. And I agree with both Councilmember Goodman and Councilmember Ray that it would be a good topic for a future meeting. Yes.
Thank you, Councilmember De Michelle. I'm not seeing any other council members weighing in, so I'll move over to City Administrator Bob Kowitz.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Your calendar is a full one. You now have a special meeting next Monday, a study session next Tuesday, a regular meeting on the 3rd of August, a special meeting on the 10th of August, and a study session on the 11th of August. The study session on the 11th of August is already full in that it's going to be talking about budget issues, so I would not recommend that. You could add it to one of your special meetings on either the 10th or on the 27th. Or we could do it on the the study session on the 28th. Study session on the 28th has a presentation of the Mobility Master Plan and a analysis of our jail costs. So those two items for the study session on the 28th are are pretty meaty. Maybe it would make sense if you have a one-item special meeting next week. We would not have any information to prepare. I know that the city clerks have been thoughtful about this topic. So if it's just a matter of placing it on the agenda next Monday, maybe that works if it's just going to be a discussion. And I'll ask Deputy City Clerk Giezer if she is aware that both she and Clerk Eggers would be available next Monday evening to speak to any questions or the discussion.
Yes, yes, we'll be available.
So, Madam Mayor, I think, given given the choices before the council over the next few weeks, probably a second item then next Monday probably makes the most sense.
Okay, great. I believe there's a couple more council members that want to weigh in. Deputy Council President Ray.
This is a bit of a question to the body. I think this is important, but I don't know that it's urgent that we need to disrupt, you know, the the current flow of things. I wonder if it might make sense for council leadership to work with the administration to find the most appropriate place to put it into the planning calendar at this time and and recognize that it is important. But I don't think it's as urgent as some of the things that we have on our mind.
Thank you, Deputy Council President Ray. Any other thoughts on timing? Councilmember Goodman.
Forgive my spelling. Comment. I'm French now. So I I would agree that it's not this super urgent have to happen tomorrow. But I also think that if we, I don't think it's a super long conversation. And if we wait until September, then we will have been closing in on six months. That seems unreasonable to not have a conversation. So I trust council leadership to make a reasonable decision with the public in mind, too. Thank you.
Thank you. That's an important consideration to, if you're going to have a discussion next Monday, that it's apparent to the public who also has comments on this that they know that's happening. Okay, thank you. I'm not seeing anything after Councilmember Goodman. Just to check back in with the city administration and city clerk that you have everything you need.
So, Madam Mayor, my understanding is that this will be discussed by leadership and we'll place it on a future agenda.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Then we are going back to, thank you for the comment, Councilmember Goodman. We are going back to the roll call vote on the consent agenda. And I'll turn it back over to the city clerk. Councilmember De Michelle.
Sorry, aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
That's seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. That passes unanimously. The next item of business tonight under regular, under, sorry, public hearing is AB 7993, Temporary Regulatory Relief for Businesses, Use of Sidewalk, Private Property, and Signage. These are interim zoning regulations. We are conducting the public hearing this evening. This item was last before city council at the June 22nd Special City Council Meeting, at which the city council adopted the interim zoning regulations. Tonight, the required public hearing will be conducted and no council Tonight, the required public hearing will be conducted, and no council action is being sought. I'd like to invite Economic Development Manager Jen Davis Hayes to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and good evening again, council members. My name is Jen Davis Hayes. I work at the city in economic development, and we're here tonight for the two temporary regulatory relief ordinances that the council passed on June 22. One was for the use of sidewalk and private property for business operations that suspended the current permitting process and created a shorter permit application and review process. Fees were also waived. The intent of that was to provide businesses safe alternatives to conducting business. To date, seven businesses have applied for this permit. The second is a commercial A-frame signage permit that we temporarily suspended the permit process and waived the fees. Again, the intent was to allow businesses to quickly respond to signage needs such as curbside parking instructions when entering the store and other communications with customers. Again, this regulatory relief is temporary for six months, intended to assist businesses during the phased reopening. That is it.
Thank you, Jen. Before we go to council questions, Council President Hunt, did you have any emails to summarize on public comments that may have been emailed in on this topic?
Yes, thank you. We did. We received a comment and email on this topic, and there were a couple parts. There was concern about the maintenance of the public spaces in front of commercial businesses and the need to clean up those spaces, that businesses keep those spaces tidy. And then there was a request that this resident would like the regulation code to not allow marketing of tobacco, alcohol, or other controlled substances in the public right-of-way, and would like more regulation around the A-frame signage that this pertains to, and would like the city proactively reviewing concerns. That concludes the comment that we received on this item.
Thank you very much. Does council have any questions on the information presented? I'll give you a few seconds to enter it in the chat. Councilmember Goodman. Oh, sorry. Council President Hunt, followed by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. Just a quick question. I wondered if you, Jen, have heard from businesses the response to the ordinance, because we are in the sort of unique position of having a hearing today, but we did already pass the ordinance. I believe it has already been enacted.
Yes, and we've heard positive response even from businesses that aren't intending to use the regulatory relief. I think it does say, let businesses know that we want to get out of their way to help them do business and to pivot quickly. Again, so seven businesses have applied for the use of sidewalk and private property permit new process. There's been others that have been in conversations with us, so it's just a matter of, you know, making it fit for what they want to do. But every business that has reached out to me has talked about the positive nature and appreciative that the council has done this.
Thank you for the question. Councilmember Goodman has comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman here. So, we have the comment about cleaning spaces and sort of requiring cleaning of spaces. I am not interested in more regulations, and I don't want to go down this rabbit hole now, but I do think that at some point, when we have not so many critical things to work on, it may be, I have noticed an increase in garbage around town in certain areas, and so I would be interested at some point when we have not a lot of things to do. I think it would be interesting to have a focus on how we might have some community, more in community engagement on that issue. We used to have a lot more volunteer, what's that called when you have the, oh, the Adopt a Highway program? We used to have something similar around town, and I know we have a spring cleanup day, but I don't think it would be a bad thing to see if we could get some energy around town and get people to, you know, to volunteer to do that. So I appreciate the suggestion. I'm not interested in another layer of regulation, but I have noticed, not where the commenter noticed garbage, but I have noticed it in other areas, and I think some attention at some point might be good. Anyway, that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing no further questions, the guidelines for citizen comments also apply to those made under the public hearing. I now open the public hearing at 10:54 PM. Again, for those who have joined us tonight and would like to speak but did not sign up in advance, please press star three on your phone to raise your hand. We'll call the first six digits of your phone number when it is your turn to make comments. I'm checking in with the city clerk. Has anyone signed up to speak or indicated a desire to speak this evening?
No, Mayor Polly, but I do see we only have two members of the public with us. If you don't mind, I can check in with them quickly.
I would appreciate that. Thank you.
First caller, 757-903, are you wishing to make comments under the public hearing Caller 757-903, are you interested in making comments? I've unmuted you, and I'm going to assume that is a no. And then we have Mr. Jensen on the line. Mr. Jensen, are you interested in making comments under the public hearing?
The only comment that I would make is, again, thank you for the opportunity to listen in this evening and learn some important stuff that you guys are debating, both at the local and the federal level. Thank you again for the opportunity.
Thank you, Jesse. I think what we're seeing is that the other line is likely a staff person's line. So, there being no additional comments, I now close the public hearing at 10:56 PM. As stated earlier, there was no council action being requested tonight, and staff will provide an update on the use and effectiveness of these interim regulations prior to their expiration in December. If there is a desire to extend the temporary regulations beyond the initial six months, another public hearing will be required. Moving on to the next item under regular business, AB 7782. This is the AFSCME, it's a General Employee Group Collective Bargaining Agreement, and I'd like to invite Human Resources Director Stephanie Johnson to make a presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Stephanie Johnson, Human Resources Director. Also joining me this evening is Lauren Knox, Senior HR Analyst. Thank you, Deputy Clerk Geiger. She's going to navigate our PowerPoint here for us tonight. Tonight, we are presenting to the council two collective bargaining agreements for which we seek council approval for two of our five labor units in the city, the American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees, also known as AFSMI, and the Isicaw Police Officers Association, also known as IPOA. These agreements are before you tonight because city management and the union teams were successful in reaching tentative agreements through negotiations over the last months. To reach those tentative agreements, those groups have also ratified these contracts by their membership, and now we seek council authorization tonight to implement what has been negotiated. So we do have three agenda bills that are linked together tonight with one presentation. I think what we'll do is we'll present the AFSMI contract first. I think we'll pause, ask any questions, maybe call for a motion, and then move on to the next. The third agenda bill item that we have is related to the contracts. It's a housekeeping item to seek council authority to update the master salary ordinance associated should you move to approve these contracts, and also has a housekeeping item for a non-represented item as well. So, Tisha, if you could advance to the next slide, please. You can go again. Thank you. So, AFSMI, just to give some refresher around AFSMI, is our General Employee Union. This is our one union of all five that are spread out, the staff that are represented by this unit are spread out of various departments. This group represents staff across finance, community planning and development, public works, parks, recreation, and community services. It's our city's largest union. It currently has 47 members, which make up about 20% of our city workforce. You may recall that this unit was previously the Isicaw Administrative Staff Association, and their previous contract expired at the end of 2019. This particular unit, ASA, changed representation at the beginning of 2020, so this is the first time in which we actually have negotiated an agreement with this new union. Definitely a weird environment to be doing collective bargaining, but I think we've been very successful in getting to the place where we're at presenting to council tonight. Tisha, go ahead and advance, please. So, contract highlights with AFSMI. The agreement before you tonight achieves a three-year agreement, 2020 through 2022. Included in those highlights, we have achieved an agreement that staggers market-based wage increases. It also achieves implementation of class comp study that has been previously implemented for the non-reps as of January 1st earlier this year. Just to highlight what those wages are, for 2020, it achieves class comp. 2021 is a 1.5 modest increase, and 2022 is a CPI, Consumer Price Index U formula, 100% with a minimum of a 1.5% increase and a maximum of 3.5. We also attempted to achieve setting a number of the benefits that we have historically already in this 2020 calendar year, had sunset for our non-rep staff. That includes replacing an orthodontia pool with a rider plan, which is a best practice in the market, eliminating sick leave conversion, education merit plan, replacing an education incentive day with a floating holiday are some of those benefits that we already had implemented with non-reps. It also achieves a few compliance items. We've had a few different laws that have surpassed since the last contract, Janus and Public, or excuse me, the PFML, which is the new state leave law. So, contract also addresses those items. We also have an addition of some robust language around some articles as it relates to changes to hours of work and some additional definition there, discipline, layoff and recall, something that we actually had to do this year unfortunately with that unit, was layoff and recall. So, we negotiated some future language around that, and then some language also around grievance provisions. Overall, 2020 cost is $120,000, but that has been offset by furloughs through previous council action. This was our first employee unit that furloughed and gave concessions on their 457 right away. I do want to say, you know, again, it's interesting to negotiate in this dynamic, certainly interesting to do union negotiations virtually, but as a first-time contract, I think that we have done some good relationship building and built some groundwork with this contract for future years. So I'm going to pause there and see if we have any questions.
Nothing is in the chat right now. You're good to go ahead. Thank you, Stephanie, for checking in.
Thank you. So, Madam Mayor, should we go ahead and call for a motion on the particular AFSMI contract before we move on to IPOA?
I think it's council's purview to decide how they would like to vote on them. I think what might be beneficial, but I'll look to see who would like to comment in the suggestion box, that we go through the entire presentation and then go through the vote. I'm looking to see if there's any objections to that in the chat box. So continue, Stephanie. Thank you.
Okay, and actually, my continuation is to turn it over to Lauren Knox, our Senior HR Analyst. She's going to talk to you about the IPOA contract. So I think, Tisha, if you could please advance the slide, that'd be great.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, we'll do a similar thing with IPOA, which we just did with AFSMI, but add in a couple of elements that I think are particularly relevant for this group, including looking at this contract through an equity lens. So first and foremost, who is the IPOA? They represent our police officers and corporals. They're an interest arbitration eligible unit, and we'll talk a little bit more about that in just a second. Their previous contract also expired on December 31, 2019. And Tisha, if you want to advance, thank you. So again, contract highlights, and these will look fairly similar to what you saw with AFSMI. It's a three-year agreement. This group was fairly creative in working with us in terms of some 2020 ways to address financial issues in 2020, and their thought that we agreed to was a wage freeze in 2020 rather than furloughing. You know, furloughing has some particular staffing issues in the police department, so that made a lot of sense with this group. Market-based wage increases, so starting next year, we will implement the class comp study with this group as well. That data is going to be inflated by 1% just to, you know, kind of catch up, given that times have changed since that study was completed. And then in 2022, also a CPI U-based wage increase. Again, with this group, we have restructure of some compensation items to better align with our market comparables. So what I mean by that is, for example, in our longevity pay article, we were aware going into negotiations that we did longevity pay in sort of a strange way, and so just restructuring that to better match the jurisdictions around us. Same thing with education pay as well. Also, sunset of benefits, similar to what was implemented for non-rep staff with this group. It looks just a tiny bit different, but things like the health reimbursement arrangement, that's going to be going away. The orthodontia pool will be moving to an orthodontia rider, similar to what Stephanie mentioned for AFSMI. Compliance items, again, same deal, some language surrounding the Janus Supreme Court case. We've achieved a premium share on the paid family medical leave premiums, things like that. Overall, 2020 cost of this contract is about $10,000, and that essentially comes down to adding the Christmas Eve holiday in this year, and they are only group currently that does not receive that as a holiday, so there's some administrative and sort of internal equity pieces to aligning them with the rest of our groups as well. Tisha, if you could advance to the next slide? Thank you. So I mentioned earlier that this group is eligible for interest arbitration, and I want to talk about that just a little bit. So, with this slide, you know, I want to talk in particular about sort of the role that the state of Washington plays in regulating the collective bargaining process and sort of how that looks on our side of the table. So, this, on the slide, you see we've got the Public Employees' Collective Bargaining Act, a couple of provisions from that, RCW 4156. In that statute, it essentially creates two types of collective bargaining. One is not eligible for interest arbitration, and one is eligible for interest arbitration. So groups like AFSMI, our Teamsters Group that represents public works employees, they are not eligible for interest arbitration. On the other hand, our police officers are eligible for interest arbitration. What this means, and then where the real difference comes down, is if we are not able to reach agreement with these groups on some issue. So with AFSMI, for example, if we were not able to reach agreement on an issue that was important to the city, we'd be able to present a last, best, and final offer, wait a certain period of time, a year after contract expiration. period of time, a year after contract expiration, and then we'd be able to implement our offer. So the city is certain of achieving its goals if they're important enough and we're willing to take that step. With the IPOA, on the other hand, if we're not able to reach agreement by statute, we're required to go to mediation as a first step. We would mediate to impasse, and then at that point, we'd head to interest arbitration if there were still outstanding issues. In interest arbitration, a neutral arbitrator would ultimately decide what the city's contract with the IPOA would look like. So, you know, where with AFSMI or other non-interest arbitration groups, we have some certainty in terms of what we can achieve. With the IPOA, at the end of the day, the city does not have the same level of certainty that would actually be determined by essentially an agent of the state, looking at comparable contracts in the region. So, Tisha, if you could head forward. Okay. So it was important to us with this contract, given current conversations and dialogue, to make sure that we presented it using an equity lens. And the lens that the city has chosen to use is the Campaign Zero Fair Police Contract. The Campaign Zero Fair Police Contract essentially argues for a back-to-basics contract for police that does not, you know, add in kind of layers upon layers of protections for police officers. It's a little bit more simple and just a straightforward contract. Some of their goals are to remove barriers to effective misconduct investigations, increase transparency around police discipline, and increase financial accountability for officers. They have a total of 14 recommendations of those. You know, our analysis is that we meet eight of those recommendations. We partially meet four, and we do not meet two of them in this proposed contract. So we'll move forward and talk about each of those. So I don't want to go through all eight of these things individually, but, you know, I do think it's significant that this contract already, you know, has some good movement in there. It's got some common sense language around things like police discipline that is similar to what you'd find in other contracts, but also gives the city a fair amount of flexibility to do what we need to do. So I'll just move forward past this one, please. So I will talk about these just briefly, the partially meets and the do not meet, without going into a huge amount of detail. So first of all, partially states that the police chief has sole authority to discipline police officers. This is actually not in our union contract, but I didn't want to give us credit for meeting it because we do have a code that rests the sole authority to discipline police officers with the police chief. That's part of our civil service code, so I just wanted to call that out. Partially expunges or destroys records of past misconduct, both sustained and unstained from disciplinary files. So there's nothing in this contract that, you know, requires us to shred or incinerate or anything like that, disciplinary files. There is one provision in section, Article 18.1, that mentions warning letters and sets a kind of limited effective date of warning letters. They have a 12-month expiration period essentially. At the end of that period, we wouldn't destroy the letter. It would still exist in the file, but it would not be able to be used as, you know, a basis for progressive discipline at that point. The next one is, partially requires, the next two both have to do with paid administrative leave following some kind of misconduct. So, the civil service statute in Washington State makes police officers for cause employees. That means that we cannot terminate them at will, we can only terminate them for cause. One of the downstream effects of that is that police officers have due process rights to their employment, which means that we cannot impact their employment or their pay without providing due process. So functionally speaking, if there was an incident in the field, you know, we would have to put that officer on paid administrative leave as a first step while allowing due process steps to occur. At the end of due process steps, then we would be able to take subsequent actions. So I will move on from there. Thank you. So there are two recommendations of the Campaign Zero Fair Police Contract that our IPOA contract does not meet. So this contract does allow officers to use a contract grievance process and have an outside arbitrator reverse disciplinary decisions. The one thing that I'll say about this is that if you were to look at any contract for any of our comparable jurisdictions, they all have similar provisions there. That is relevant because if we were to try and negotiate this provision away, assuming the police union did not agree, we would end up in interest arbitration over the issue, and the city would likely lose in interest arbitration because the arbitrator would look at comparable contracts, which all have a similar provision in them. It's a similar scenario with lie detector tests. Our contract does say that we cannot force a police officer to take a lie detector test as a condition of employment, so we couldn't say, you know, take this test or you're fired kind of thing. Again, if you look at our comparable contracts, you'll find that almost all of them, I think there's one exception, have similar or more stringent language to ours. So if we want to continue from there... Okay. Next steps. So, we've put these next steps in the framework of police reform, but quite honestly, these apply to collective bargaining in general. This could apply to AFSMI as well. And I just want to be clear that, you know, there are, whether council approves this contract tonight or does not approve this contract tonight, there are other opportunities for us to make movement on police reform. This is not the only time or place that we're able to do this. So obviously, you know, conversations with our community are just starting. City Administrator Bob Quitz, you know, mentioned a couple of opportunities for that on July 29th and subsequent to that, and I believe that we need to allow some time and space for the community to have those conversations in a meaningful way. Once those conversations have, you know, bubbled up to the level of sort of some action items, we can certainly work with the union on items that are identified and see what progress we're able to make if they need to be bargained. I also, you know, there is an opportunity, should the council wish to, to lobby the legislature in January on some of these issues, where really legislative change is what would be needed if we were to make change in these areas. And then also, you know, this is a three-year agreement, so we would begin bargaining a successor agreement in 2022, which is not terribly far away. So if there were, you know, additional recommendations at that point in time, we would have another opportunity to include those in the collective bargaining process. So I will pause there, and if anybody has comments or questions, please ask them.
Yes, Lauren, we do have a question. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. Regarding the lobbying, so it seems, it seems from your presentation that the two items on Campaign Zero that were not in our contract, those were because they are not in other regional contracts. So would you, would, in your estimation, those be the ones that would need to be addressed at the state level?
Yeah. So essentially, and some of this is speculation because we have not approached our police union on those issues in this bargaining cycle. So certainly as a first step, you know, we could approach the union and just see if there's any willingness to move on some of those. With something like grievance arbitration, I would be honestly shocked, and I don't think that their council would, you know, at all recommend that they make movement there. But, you know, at the end of the day, I think that comes back to the interest arbitration statute. If we want to be able to make movement on something like grievance arbitration, we need to be able to use a process that's different than the interest arbitration process. As long as that process exists, you know, we'll end up in arbitration. The arbitrator looks at the regional contracts and will set contract language that matches those regional contracts at the end of the day, whether the city likes it or not. And there is some movement bubbling up. I've heard murmurings here and there about lobbying around the interest arbitration statute, so we can certainly keep our ear to the ground and inform council if there are any, any bills that look, you know, promising or interesting or of note.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Hall here. A quick comment to that effect. Longtime Isicaw friend, former city council member, now state resident. If Bill Ramos is actually leading on this one right here, I think we have a partner in this situation.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall. Not seeing any other comments in the chat box, so do we have one more presentation?
We do not. I think just, Stephanie, did you want to say anything about the salary ordinance?
Sure. So should the council move to adopt both of these agreements? Both of these agreements have class comp implementation within them, and so in an effort to approve the contracts, we then need to do the housekeeping item of updating the master salary ordinance. So the changes that would be achieved in both contracts then would need to be changed in the master salary ordinance, which is why we've packaged it together tonight. I don't want to also lose sight of the fact that there is one more change to the master salary ordinance around one non-represented position. We do not have a public works director classification currently in our classification and compensation system. And just to remind the council tonight, we have historically had both a public works engineering director and a public works operations director, with both those positions being vacant, and administrations desire to move those departments and merge them together. We have begun conversations around recruitment for our next public works director in a merged department, and so one of the other housekeeping items while we're bringing the master salary ordinance would also be to add the public works director, a non-represented position, into the master salary ordinance as well.
Thank you for that, Stephanie. Before we go to any of the motions, I want to check in with Council President Hunt and see if there was any email comments received on any of these three regular business items.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, we did receive a comment. It didn't specifically reference this agenda item, but it did look at and specifically reference our police contracts and had questions specific to the police contracts and things regarding police pay and how agreements between the city and police unions are reached, as well as whether unions have the power to override the disciplinary actions of the police chief. And the resident felt that our chief was a great leader and wanted to have, wanted to, so that was the basis of the question about whether the union had the power to override the disciplinary action of the police chief. The resident wrote that they would not want to be able to overpower, that they would not want the union to be able to overpower the judgment of the police chief. Sorry, it's late. And I also just wanted to say that we have also received a lot of public comments and emails regarding police reform, and I think having residents look through our contracts is also part of that, that there is a heightened interest in understanding public safety and understanding police, and we have received comments on that more broadly as well.
Thank you. Can I see in the chat box if somebody is prepared to make a motion? Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. I move to approve the terms of the 2020 to 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Isicaw Administrative Staff Association, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement.
And Deputy Council President Ray.
This is Chris Ray. I second the motion.
Thank you. It has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? And I will look to the chat box to see if any members of council would like to comment. Not seeing any. I'm going to call for the vote. Oh, sorry.
I have a comment.
Yeah, fine, thank you. Sometimes it shows up a little late. Council President Hunt.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I appreciated that this information was brought forward in the regular meeting and regular business, and I think that people are, people in the community have been asking us questions and just wanting to better understand the processes around how we work with the police department and with the union. There is heightened awareness around this, so I appreciate you bringing forward the information that you brought forward, and I think it was very clear about how we, how we work with the unions, and I appreciate that we have more transparency by having this in the regular meeting.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. I agree. There being no other comments, if there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to approve the terms of the 2020 through 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city and the American Federation of State, County and Municipal Employees, Isicaw Administrative Staff Association, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement. City Clerk, could you please do the roll call vote, using the new alternating format?
Yes, and we will begin in alphabetical order. So Councilmember Demichel.
Can we not? This is the very first time we're using it. So Barb, here you go. Okay. Councilmember Demichel.
I said aye, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Mart.
Aye.
Deputy Council President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. That passes unanimously. We're, I'm looking to see if there is anyone prepared to make another motion on the Isicaw Police Officers' Association IPOA collective bargaining agreement. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you. I approve the terms of the 2020 to 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Isicaw Police Officers' Association, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement.
Thank you. Council President Hunt.
Councilmember Mart. Oh, sorry. There's a lot going on in that chat box. Thank you for the second. Councilmember Mart has a question, or a comment, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Did the maker of the motion wish to speak to their motion before taking, before you take comment from me?
Great, great question. Thank you. Would Councilmember Goodman like to make some comments?
No, thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mart.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Mart. You know, I think this will not satisfy all the people who came before us and spoke to us, but what I get out of this is, there's a, there's a number of issues that we face as a community where the solutions are really region-wide or statewide. And I look at this, and what I hear from our staff this evening, is that we have done everything that we can as a city, and if we wish to seek, if we want to move the dial on some of these things further, it's really a statewide solution. And I like that because I think most of us feel the IPD is a, is a great organization, and we're not trying to single out the IPD on some of these things. And yet, standards are changing, and I look forward to a statewide conversation about some of the issues that we've heard about this evening, to which I feel appreciative of staff offering these clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Councilmember Mart. I'm not seeing any other commenters in the chat box, so I...
on some of these things further, it's really a statewide solution. And I like that because I think most of us feel the IPD is a, is a great organization, and we're not trying to single out the IPD on some of these things. And yet, standards are changing, and I look forward to a statewide conversation about some of the issues that we've heard about this evening, to which I feel appreciative of staff offering these clarifications. Thank you.
Thank you for the comment, Councilmember Martz. I'm not seeing any other commenters in the chat box, so I will call for the vote. If there's no further discussion, the motion before council is to approve the terms of the 2020 through 2022 collective bargaining agreement between the city and the Issaquah Police Officers Association, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute the agreement. City Clerk, can you please use, can you please call the roll vote, roll, call the roll call vote using the new alternating format? Yes. Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Councilmember Hall.
Aye.
Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. That passes unanimously. And then the last one I'm looking for a motion on is the amendment to the 2020 salary ordinance. And the motion has been posted in the chat box. And do we, yeah, Council President Hunt, would you care to make a motion?
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. I move to adopt ordinance number 2912, adopting revised 2020 salary schedules for nonrepresented AFSCME and IPOA represented city employees, and amending the salary schedules previously adopted by ordinance numbers 2887 and 2906.
And Deputy Counsel President Ray.
This is Chris Ray. I'll second the motion.
So it has been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Pause to allow you some time to enter something in the chat box that you'd like. Not seeing any. If there's no further discussion, the motion before the council is to adopt ordinance number 2912, adopting revised 2020 salary schedules for nonrepresented AFSCME and IPOA represented city employees, and amending the salary schedules previously adopted by ordinance numbers 2887 and 2906. City Clerk, can you please call the roll? Councilmember Hall. Council President Hunt.
Aye.
Councilmember Martz.
Aye.
Deputy Counsel President Ray.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh.
Aye.
Councilmember DeMichelle.
Aye.
Councilmember Goodman.
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays. Thank you. That passes unanimously. It looks like City Administrator Bob Kwitz has a comment.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, before Lauren and Stephanie go, I just want to thank them both. They have had a very busy 2020. They are without 25% of their staff in the Human Resources Department. They have had to negotiate labor agreements completely remotely. They have done it in record time with results that really fashion the needs that we have as a community. They have been able to work with our bargaining units in order to help understand the challenges that we face, and they have done it really in exemplary fashion. Just another fact that Stephanie shared with me, this year, we have hired 72 individuals, and we have terminated 67 individuals. So that is almost 100, over 120 staff members that since the beginning of this year, we have either separated or hired, and that's all done with 25% less staff. So as we, as we talk about staffing resources, as we talk about the good work that we all want to do for you, I really want to recognize Lauren, Stephanie, and Shawnee, our three members in the Human Resources Department, they've done extraordinary work under extraordinarily difficult circumstances. You will likely not see them now for a few months because of some of the, the last pieces of this will, will trail as we go into the fall, but I just want to recognize the excellent work that Lauren, Stephanie, and Shawnee have been doing. I mean, people were working so hard for you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think it's just important to remind you that this has been very, very difficult. You know, there are over 40 vacant positions in the city right now. That's almost 20% of our workforce is either vacant because of layoffs or vacant because of positions being held open. We're trying our best to serve you and the members of the community, and Lauren, Stephanie, Shawnee really are, are leading the way. So thank you, Madam Mayor, for letting me say a few words.
Thank you, Wally. Very strong team. Well done, ladies. Lots of hard work in there. The next item on our agenda this evening is Good of the Order, and I know that at least one council member has something for Good of the Order. So Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Polly. This is Councilmember Hall. My apologies to everyone that this is late. I guess I'm still a newbie on council, and it seems postponing it from the last late council meeting would mean it wouldn't be late this time of year, so I'm learning. I'll be quick. So it has to do with the Cascade Water Alliance Board of Directors meeting that Mayor Polly and I attended on Wednesday, June 24th, last month. We attended that meeting and heard a presentation from Cascade staff on preliminary budgeting and water rates in the future. And like I mentioned a few weeks ago, and in the recent email to you all, I think we wanted to gauge your reaction and your interest in increasing, in increasing CWA water rates. So during that presentation, so if you weren't able to read that email, I'll just really quickly go over some highlights from it. During that presentation, staff described some of the key drivers around why they were presenting water protection water rate increases to us. One, seeing that we're seeing an overall upward trend, upward trend in water demand, but the demand isn't increasing as fast as the customer base growth. The efficiencies in water conservation measures are critical, but the gains are expanding throughout the regional customer base, and that's actually straining revenues to Cascade Water Alliance. And then finally, the Lake, Lake Taps development, which would be a regional reservoir that was purchased by Cascade Water Alliance. Turning that into a usable reservoir will cost, will be a lot of capital costs. They showed us a couple different models of what rate increases might look like through 2060, some even starting next year. And so when that happened, there were, there were some people around the table, you could tell that might not feel uncomfortable, or might feel uncomfortable having rate increases during, during a pandemic while families are struggling with their bills. So like, like Councilmember Martz did previously, I wanted to bring this issue up with all you all, to take your temperature, and if you had any questions, I'd be happy to try to answer along with Mayor Polly, or at least ask them of Cascade staff on your behalf. Our next meeting is this Wednesday, and I think, Mayor Polly, I think our hope was to be able to go into the board meeting and communicate that, you know, this is how our colleagues feel in Issaquah, and perhaps, I'm seeing some comments in right now, but perhaps in the interest of time, we could assume unless we hear otherwise that the council is not in favor of water rate increases starting 2021. I know for sure Council, Council President Martz has something she'd like to say.
Yeah, I think we should, yeah, I, I know it's late, but I really do think this is important, and it goes to the same questions we've been asking all of our partner organizations, is what's your COVID plan? What's your economic crisis plan? Because it's not business as usual, whether it's the county, or it's Cascade Water Alliance, or anybody that we work with. This is not business as usual, and we really need people to tell us that. So I think, even though it's late, I do think it would be important to go around the, the room and take the council's temperature. And also, I do believe that there's a few other cities on Cascade Water Alliance that are hearing the same sort of thing from their council. Not an appropriate year for a rate increase. So let's start with, I believe it was Council President Hunt that was first with a comment.
Thank you. This is Council President Hunt. So as the former alternate member of the board for Cascade Water, I do know that the plans around using Lake Taps as a reservoir, those development plans, those are in many ways, many years off. Also, there's a lot of efficiency in water that people are using less, less water even though our population is growing, and I really, I really question that we would need to make this reservoir, the, the argument about needing to increase rates to fund the development of the Lake Taps reservoir at this time, it really doesn't feel like something that we should pass along to the ratepayers at this point because of the huge economic impacts of COVID-19 and the fact that we're asking really to, to reduce the impacts of rates across the board. And so I, I don't see why we would make an exception in this case, and it seems doubly, doubly important to not increase this rate if the reason is this very long-term need that we could postpone.
Thank you, Council President Hunt. It looks like Councilmember Martz would like to make a comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is Councilmember Martz. Yeah, I heard the Lake, Lake Taps thing, and like, blood filled my ears and my hair started sizzling off the top of my head. This is not the year to implement the grand master plan for the future of water for CWA. This is a year to hunker down and just get through. So plus one, plus one. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember DeMichelle.
Councilmember Martz just woke me up because I am now seeing this vision of blood coming off the top of his head. I just wanted to go on the record and say that I agree. I don't think this is time to do a rate increase, and we saw when the South Cities Association pushed back on King County that they were able to come up with savings. So I think it's time to push back, and this is not, not the time to be doing this.
Right. Thank you, Councilmember DeMichelle. Deputy Counsel President Ray.
No, no big surprise. I, I don't think that this is the time, given a lot of factors. And I just think back about a year ago, when we were looking at a new water system plan here in town, and it was an increase that we thought was unacceptable, and we said, you know, "Try again, sharpen your pencil." And I would like to ask Cascade to, to go back and look at what they're doing and really better justify any rate increase, and particularly at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Goodman.
Agreed with everyone.
Thank you. Thank you. Before we go back to Councilmember Hall to wrap up, and for him to verify what he has heard from all of you, I am the voting member on the board. However, as this, when this item comes up, if Councilmember Hall is at the meeting, I'm going to let him summarize and address your comments and concerns. Even though I'm the voting member, it's good for them to hear from more than just the mayor of Issaquah. Councilmember Hall, do you want to wrap this up?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. Councilmember Hall here. I was going to say roughly the same thing that I've been taking notes on, what everyone's saying, so I thought I'd just kind of wrap up and see if I'm hearing it right. So I'm hearing pretty consistently, no, go back to the drawing board. Using Lake Taps as a justification for water, water rate increases is not justifiable at this point. Even go back, look what you're doing, and back to us with better justification of why water rate increases are necessary right now. Hearing, no, this is the year to hunker down. I'm hearing we're not time for water rates, potentially even a time, come up with savings. So these are some of the things I'm hearing and looking for.
I think you got it. I think that's really good. It'll be very interesting. I also am not sure if anyone else has something for Good of the Order, but I do. I want to apologize to Councilmember Martz for obviously getting him upset in the meeting. We are all stressed out, and I appreciate how hard, not only the council's working, but how hard the staff is working. Kind of, you know, the request to be able to understand a situation before you take a significant action on it, that totally makes sense to me. I had a reaction very much about, I just not sure that we can deliver on that promise. But we will provide something that hopefully provides context for a better conversation. So in this period, as we work our way through all the way to the end of December, we're all going to be overloaded, and so I, I will try harder to give gracious space. I encourage you all to try harder to give gracious space. We're a very strong team. We're doing incredible things right now. So I just put that out there on the table, and then I want to run through a few items that are upcoming. So the following upcoming meetings will be held virtually. There's a city council study session Tuesday, July 8th, with potential agenda items, including the Mobility Master Plan and City Services Assessment of the Jail. There is a new meeting now scheduled for the Monday, I believe, the 27th is correct. Wally can correct me if I'm not stating that accurately. There is a community meeting on Issaquah's Draft Police Accountability Equity and Human Services Action Plan, Wednesday, July 29th at 6:00 p.m. You can register online to participate at issaquahwa.gov. And there is a city council regular meeting on Monday, August 3rd at 7:00 p.m. So there is no executive session this evening. Thank you all for hanging out till 11:44 p.m. We are now adjourned. Night, all.